Good evening Wakefield and welcome to the April 25th, 2022 Town Council Meeting. I hereby call this meeting to order and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have all seven members of the council present tonight and in studio. Item number four, public engagement. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone online for public engagement?
Actually, I mean, we did get one, but I don't see anybody online yet for some reason.
Okay. All right. Well, you can let us know if somebody comes, we can make... Should we go straight to public hearing since it's already 7:03? Steve, what do you think?
Yes, you can.
Okay. Yeah, the attendees are coming in now. I don't know what happened, but they're here now.
Okay.
All right. So, yeah, they're all filtering through. I'm just gonna see if this guy is on.
Okay.
Madam Chair, while she's finding them, we did have one that came in that was not going to speak, but they had a question.
Okay, so...
Yeah, and I forwarded that to the Town Council.
Okay, so why don't you read that?
Sure. Why don't I read it and then I think Town Council can answer it. The question is, this is regarding 383, I mean, Water Street. Previously, the town made it clear in writing and on past Zoom meetings that it does not get involved in any property line or plot line disputes between landowners and recommends it be handled privately and/or legally in court if need be. I would ask for this point to be reiterated if possible. Also, some clarity if that statement is not accurate. Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chair, that statement certainly is accurate. Unless the town owns a piece of land that is involved in a boundary dispute, we don't have a dog in the fight. And our invariable position is to say to private property owners, you know, go sort it out. That's what the Land Court and the Superior Court are for.
Okay. Okay. So hopefully that clarifies it. Is there anybody who wants to speak online?
Yes. Okay. So we do have this gentleman, Herbice Bucage of Water Street.
Okay. So while you're bringing them up, I'll just remind everyone that we reserve three minutes for public comment and we don't necessarily engage, but may take it up at a later time.
Sure. Thanks, Chair.
So, yeah, if you could just introduce yourself and your address, please.
Yes. Hi, I'm a resident of East Boston. I was just looking for this council when this ordeal first started. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, now we can.
Okay. So I wanted to come back. It's been now, I believe, almost four months since I last spoke to the council. And as sort of an update, as I'm sure you'll hear, Mr. Mayo was there today, I believe, so saw the update. But the one thing that the council asked us when this whole ordeal started was to be patient, as this would be a drawn-out process. And we have shown, I believe, and Mr. McGrail admitted in previous meetings, the utmost patience. Unfortunately, that patience hasn't been reciprocated. And you, I sent an email to all of the council members earlier today that shows pictures that are still, unregistered vehicles that are still in front of our property that we can see from our backyard. And I represent, you know, there's five or six other neighbors on this call, and they may or not speak, but all of the neighbors have experienced a similar thing. And I would say we should be showed patience for this matter. And you did ask at the very beginning, that Mr. Olwick and Mr. McGrail reciprocate that to the neighbors by maybe first starting to clean out the unregistered vehicles that are closest to the neighbors. And we're now four months into it and that has not happened. I would just ask that when you think today regarding giving an extension of that, think about us, the neighbors, too. We've shown patience. I know you, as a town, have given a ton of patience and even financial resources to keep Mr. Olwick in a hotel. That's not being reciprocated at all to the people around us. And so that's one thing that I would ask that you take into consideration. The other thing that I do want to make sure I highlight is, at the last meeting about a month ago, Mr. McGrail said, "We hopefully won't need the whole month. I think we'll need only about a week." Well, a month has passed and today, in that month period, we live next door and others can vouch for this. Today was the first time in that month period that a car was moved. And so again, it's just another reference point, another data point. Again, Mr. Mayo, I know was there today and saw all the vehicles that we all see as neighbors. And I was just asked that you take all of that into consideration as you think about whether another extension is merited and warranted. Just think about the neighbors and the patients we've given so far and how that hasn't been reciprocated. And to the point regarding the property line dispute.
I think your audio just went out.
Sorry. Can you hear me better now?
Yeah. So, yeah, if you could just close it up another couple of seconds, you were gonna bring up a...
Nope, I'm all set.
Okay. Thank you very much. We will certainly take that into consideration when we discuss the matter later in the agenda. Sherry, anybody else? I also wanted to mention that I know that there were a lot of comments in our packet of information on the library, the little library around the lake, and that has actually been pulled from consideration tonight. So, we appreciate everybody's input, but it is not something we're going to be taking a vote on now or ever. They have pulled their request to place it. Madam Clerk, anybody else for public comment?
No, that was it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Let's do the... Steve, are you okay with going into the minutes? And then we'll go to the public hearing, I guess. So, do I have a motion for the approval of the April 11th, 2022 regular meeting minutes?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Approval of the April 11th, 2022 Town Council Executive Session Minutes?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, we have a public hearing for a liquor license for Mago's Doing Business as Bellino's located at 146 Lowell Street. Do I have a motion to go into public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Okay, we do a roll call vote. Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Dennehy?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay. So we are officially in the public hearing? I believe we have a representative from Bellino's.
Lee and Jacqueline, you're both new then. Can you run you?
Hi.
Hi.
Lee will be speaking.
Clerk Dalton, can you hear me now?
Yes. Yes, we can hear you.
Great. I apologize for that.
Welcome to the Town Council Meeting.
Thank you.
If you could just introduce yourselves and make your presentation.
Madam Chairperson and members of the council, good evening. My name is Lee Resic. I'm the attorney for the applicant, Mago's Inc., Doing Business as Bellino's. Joining on the call is my clerk, Jacqueline Rothenberg, who's been helpful with this applicant. And calling in is my client's principal, Samuel Gomez. By the way, the name Mago's is an arrangement of the last letters of Mr. Gomez's last name, if anyone was wondering. We're here tonight in connection with the application for the transfer and/or approval of the liquor license associated with the Italian restaurant called Bellino's located in Lakeview Plaza. That's at 146 Lowell Street, across the street from the lake and the Gertrudes-Balding Park. In addition to the liquor license application, there are three ancillary applications. First one for a common vicular's license, second for an entertainment license, and lastly, the manager application to appoint Mr. Gomez as the manager of record for those licenses. These applications are submitted in connection with our asset purchase agreement. My client is purchasing the assets of the existing Bellino's restaurant from the seller and current licensee, which is J.K.S. Restaurants, Inc. And I believe one of its principals, Mr. Shane Manfred, may be listening in on this in support as well. In general, the principals have been excellent to work with and we're excited to step into their shoes. As for the space itself, we've worked out an assignment of the existing lease, which is signed off on by the landlord. The assignment, lease, and consent documents are in the file. The goal of the transfer is a seamless transition of ownership here. There are no changes other than the owner and the manager. We're keeping the same name, furnishings, hours, and layout. The restaurant consists of 2,200 square feet on a single floor with an eating/dining area, a bar area, outdoor patio area, and then, of course, the kitchen. There is a plan submitted in the application. Just to be clear, there are no changes. That is the current layout. There are no proposed changes to the layout. For the common vic and entertainment applications, I'll just run through it quickly. There are two TVs and a stereo. No changes there. Those exist presently. Also, the same hours of operation will apply. That's 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. on weekends, 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. on weekdays, closed Mondays. There are five front-of-the-house staff and five staff in the kitchen. As of the time of this meeting, I understand that all of those staff members will continue on through the transition, which is great news. As for my client, Mr. Samuel Gomez, he intends to be a good steward. He's met with the staff. He's met some of the customers. He expects to involve his daughter, Wendy, when she graduates from college later this year. As for his qualifications, Mr. Gomez has 29 years of restaurant experience. He is the head chef and kitchen manager at Toscano with locations in Harvard Square and Beacon Hill. He is a very hard worker. He began at Toscano in 1993 as kitchen staff and worked his way up the rungs to the kitchen manager and head chef, which he is today for both restaurants. He also worked from 2005 to 2009 as a butcher at Whole Foods. In addition to his work at Toscano, I think he only was often worked for something like six hours a day during that time to underscore his work ethic. He holds many certifications, including E-TIPS, food allergen awareness training, crowd manager training, serve-safe manager training, and a meat apprentice program training from his time as a butcher. We've included a sample of menu items. These will not replace entirely the existing Bellino's menu. What we want to do is keep that menu in place and the specials will be added slowly over time to see what kind of works and what maybe doesn't. And you can see that the tradition is in keeping with the Sicilian-inspired, Italian-inspired menu that Bellino's has enjoyed for, I believe, 18 years. Finally, I believe, Mr. Gomez meets the technical requirements to be the manager of record. He is a Massachusetts resident residing in East Boston. He is a U.S. citizen and he is familiar with the laws of the Commonwealth and the rules of the ABCC pertaining to the sale of alcohol. So in closing, Mr. Gomez is very excited for the opportunity to continue the legacy that is Bellino's and to become a contributing member of the Wakefield community. So with that, Madam Chairperson and members of the board, thank you for your time and consideration. If you have any questions, please, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. I will open it up to counselors if there are any questions. Yeah. Very thorough. So if there are anybody from the public have any questions? We'll open it up for public comment? Okay. Well, we can take about on all three at once, right? The common vicular, the... Okay.
And Madam Chair, if I could, to make their license consistent with others in town, the timing, it's easier for the police that everyone has the same. They don't have to be open as much, but every other license in town is from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. on Sundays, and 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. on Monday through Saturday. That just consistently works.
That's just consistency.
Don't have to be open, but then we know and, you know.
Okay. Very good. Counselor Chines?
Just a question with regard to the common vicular and the entertainment licensees. I'm assuming they've gone through the whole process.
Yes, gone through the portal. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to approve the liquor license, common vicular and entertainment license for Mago's Doing Business as Bellino's.
So moved. Second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Mr. Gomez, welcome to Wakefield. We very much look forward to dining with you.
Madam? Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to make a statement, if it's possible.
Of course.
And I know that is... So, my name is Shane Manfred and I'm the current owner of Bellino's. And I would like to start by thanking Wakefield residents for the past 19 years of support. Also, a ton of Wakefield for giving us the tools we needed to succeed as business. I knew this is gonna be emotional for us.
Please continue.
I would like to thank Mr. Mayo, Ms. Dalton, and selectmen and council members for the continued support they have given us as business owners in Wakefield. I hope the same support will go for Mr. Samuel and his family to continue the Bellino's journey and take the business to the next level. And we will state and support Mr. Sam through this transaction. And hopefully, he will be able to take the restaurant fully in a timely manner. Again, I apologize for emotional at this point. Thank you again for all your support that you've given us from the residents and the administration in Wakefield town. Appreciate it.
Mr. Manfred, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I... It just says so much, I think, about you and about this town, that the emotion you're showing. And I know we all have enjoyed eating at Bellino's and we will miss you and we will welcome Mr. Gomez.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Anybody else want to say anything? Thank you very much. Good luck to you, Mr. Manfred.
Thank you.
And we need to close the public hearing. I have a motion to close.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote. Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Vice Chair Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Santos?
Aye.
Counselor Dennehy?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay. Item number seven, we have a... We have two property updates.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could be so bold to request that perhaps we can move up item 10A, where we do have Karen Burke here in attendance and maybe she can...
I have no objection to that.
She'd love to stay for the rest of our meeting.
Why don't you step right out?
So it is my great pleasure to reintroduce you to Karen Burke, who has done a great job with our Veteran Services, really pulled that whole situation together, and welcome her as she enters a new role in the Wakefield family and becomes our Director of the Council of Aging. Karen has a great passion for this job, a great passion for Wakefield, and I think she's gonna do great things. And I think she is the type of leader and manager that, and department head, that we in Wakefield really look for, someone that's willing to roll up their sleeves and do everything it takes to give the services to the residents, including learning how to ride, drive the bus, as we talked about during the interview, which Judy has done on occasion when the regular drivers aren't there. So I think that she will really move on Judy Luciano's legacy. And I will say that I'll miss Judy greatly. And there is gonna be a coffee for her Thursday at 10:00 at Town Hall, if anybody would like to come. And we can talk to her then. But maybe Karen wants to say a few words, but we're really happy to have her on board.
We're really happy to have you.
Thank you all. I would like to thank Steve, the hiring team, Judy Luciano, and all of you for trusting me to take on this new role. As Steve said, I'm very excited for this. I really look forward to serving the residents, the 60 and over residents here in Wakefield, to continue to give them space and services to help them feel valued and active members of the community. I loved my time when I was part-time VSO at the McCarthy Center, working with Judy and her team. They're fantastic. I love the work they do, and that is what inspired me to want to take on this new role, leave my veterans that I love so much, but take on a new role, serving them in different ways and serving the community. I love Wakefield. It's a wonderful community. Tonight was evidence of what a great community this is, so I look forward to continuing to be a part of it. So thank you all for your trust.
That's great. Yes. And we always have a bingo person, so whenever you need Ed, he's our go-to senior center person. Trivia, sorry, the bingo trivia, so.
The person's got harder this time.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You never know.
Well, we are thrilled to have you and can't wait to... I know we've all missed being over there during COVID. And, you know, we're always here to help you and support you in any way that we can.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments or... Go ahead.
I'm the liaison to Council on Aging, so anything that you need, feel free to reach out to me. And I look forward to working with you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
You, too.
I'd just say, first off, congratulations. You know, I'm so excited to know that you're gonna be taking the baton from Judy. And I know you do great things, Karen. And having spent time at the center, especially since it's reopened now and people are coming back again, it just has such a profoundly positive impact on so many people. And you see that, you know, like seeing residents, the seniors, just, you know, talking with one another and engaging and laughing and having fun together. And, you know, and speaking with a lot of them, it was a really isolating time during COVID for so many of them. And I know that the center did all that they could. Judy, driving the bus sometimes, you know, to go around to folks, but it wasn't the same. And we know that. And being able to see that now, I just think that this role is so incredibly important as folks are coming out of the pandemic and, you know, and living their lives, especially, you know, at the ages that we're talking about. But it was, it's been so great to see so many... I've been there, I think, twice in the last two weeks, to see so many smiles on so many folks, you know, after so long of not being together. And so I think you're coming at such an important time for so many of our seniors. And so I just wish you the best of luck. And I know that you're gonna, you're gonna just do wonderful things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you. We look forward to seeing you at the McCarthy Center.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Absolutely. Okay. 383 Water Street update.
I know that Turney McGrail is on. I think Sherry was prior to bring him on. But I can talk a little bit about the other half of the equation. And Turney McGrail can maybe talk a little bit about the, what's going on on the site. So anyways, there has been quite a transformation. And Brian will talk about it. And there's still some work, a little bit of work to go. And I'm sure that they'll get there. But in answering some of the questions of the council is that not just cleaning up the property, but helping the homeowner back into his home was a big, was a big undertaking. And, you know, there are still services that we will continue to offer in that area. We don't, we're not just gonna go away now that the homeowner is back in his house. But what a tremendous outpouring of support from the community. And I'm gonna single them out. 128 Electric that not only did all of the plumbing and electrical work, but actually donated what was needed to get the gentleman back into his home. I can't say enough about our health, our Board of Health, our Coral Hope, who was there almost every day, meeting and helping the homeowner. Go through, it was a tough time for him. Our senior, senior center we just talked about at Beth Greenberg over there. So these services are going to continue. There's still things to do. But anyways, the gentleman is back in his home. The home is, it's still kind of living in a house that, if you've ever renovated, you're still living among some renovations. So there is a open card, but there is heat, there is hot water, there is electricity, there are smoke detectors, there's a working bathroom, things that weren't there before. And remember that we, as a community, or the Health Department did require that the homeowner leave. We essentially, you know, did not allow him to stay in there anymore. He did go back to the property on, it was a couple of days later than I had hoped. So I think it was the 11th or 12th of April. And we did expend money. It was our obligation statutorily, as we did make him leave his home. And less the, less the gifts that we got of $6,000, it's cost us $22,851. Okay? I think very well spent, myself. We will be applying to the state under Mass General laws, Chapter 79, Section 13, to get some reimbursement under that. They say you can get up to half. I will tell you, I am not all that optimistic, just because that fund seems to not be paying out much. But maybe they have some funds in because of COVID and we'll be pushing for that. But I think to get, to have what happened there and to get the property almost there, we heard that we have a little bit more work to do, for that money would have cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars, had we taken another route and actually, you know, cost a person his family home. So I want to thank the council for their work on that. And then I'll, if there are any questions to that, then Mr. McGrail can go forward.
Thank you. Mr. McGrail?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council. For the record, Attorney Brian McGrail, I represent Mr. Olwick. I will say this, we're doing our best. It's been a long road. We appreciate your cooperation. I say it again, I appreciate the understanding for the majority of the neighbors. And we're doing our best. We're very close. I was out there today. I'm gonna abstain from responding directly to some of the comments that were made. But I will tell you that it was stated that there was a car taken out today. What was taken out today was a 21 and 1/2-ton Grado. That's 43,000 pounds of machine, not a car. We made a commitment, your council had requested, specifically Counselor Dombrowski had requested, that we not just comply with the, with the order in the town bylaw, but we go above and beyond that and do a cleanup of the site. And we've done that, I think, meticulously and in a very organized fashion. The vehicles that are left were left there because we had to get things out of the way, like that machine today, and still other materials that have to be taken out. Some of these, some of these vehicles are buried in and dug in. So out there today, I think there's probably about anywhere between five and seven vehicles that have to go. I'm very comfortable and confident that we will have those out now that we have access within the next two weeks. And then, there's still gonna be cleanup that has to be done, and that will happen over time. So I don't think you'll see the property meticulous at that point. But it's really come a long way. So all the unregistered vehicles, which is a requirement, we can have out, I think, prior to your next meeting, which I believe is on May 9. I would, if I could share my screen, just to kind of give you an idea of some things that have transpired out there. Not as much detail as last time. But there's been a cleaning of the site. You can see grading, smoothed out. All the vehicles in that area are gone. That's to the side of the house. This is out back. And Counselor Dombrowski was, you know... This is out back, and Councilor Dombrowski was, you know, walked this site, you know it was back there. So it's virtually in the back of the property. There's nothing left, some tires and stuff, some small debris that we will get out over time, stuff that is not going to be kept. And then fire. Respectfully, we're just asking to your next meeting to get the rest of the unregistered motor vehicles off the site. And I think we can accomplish that.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions or?
Steve, you want to explain what that last picture was?
Last screen that you showed, Brian, was that the vehicle that was removed today? You froze.
You froze there for a minute, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Geez.
That's not a car.
That's not a car, no.
So that had to be taken out. That was the machine that we thought we were going to use a crane for. We had talked about that time. And the crane operator was not comfortable with it because the concern was, when you picked it up, it might fall apart. There's no, there's no hooks or anything to grab on. So we actually had to get mechanical work done and get it running to be able to load it onto a flatbed trailer and take it off of the property today. We, it got running. I don't know how, but it ran.
Wow. Any, Councilor Dombrowski?
So, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. McGrail, for this update, and Mr. Mayo as well. Again, having been on the site and knowing what was there, I think if you were to just have removed the vehicles, kind of plucked them out, I don't know that we would have been seeing what we're seeing today, which is important, because I'm looking at this more holistically to understand, all right, because I recognize the neighbors' concerns, and they have been incredibly patient, and I think we all recognize that. And they have a right to be frustrated, I think, at this point. I get that. But I also want to say, you know, want to look at it from the perspective, all right, well, what's the end product going to be? And I think ultimately, we're going to have neighbors that are going to have a nicer, abutting property as a result of some, you know, delays that had to inevitably, you know, be the case in order to get us there. So I'd be comfortable with the two weeks. It looks like, from the pictures I've seen, Mr. McGrail, and I drove past the site today, too, it seems like most of the vehicles you're talking about are, I'll call it almost like low-hanging fruit compared to some of the other things that had to be removed from that property, right? I mean, some of them are on the perimeter, and it doesn't, doesn't appear to be something that should take more than two weeks, I would imagine. Is that fair?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. To the, you know, to be fair, and to, you know, not misrepresent, if you face the house to the right-hand side, there's still a lot of stuff that has to be taken out. So, and that's where the vehicles are.
Like with the hot tub, like there's like a hot tub there, for instance?
Yes. As you walk, as you face the house, Councilor, you walk to the right and go back that way. That's where, and there were, and there's four vehicles along the property line, and I think that's what the neighbors are looking for, I understand. And we understand the neighbors also, and we respect them. And I think that's the area that they're, and that's where we have to get some of the material out of the way. If we wanted Mr. Soriano to just go in and yank those with his excavator, it's going to make an absolute mess of everything. It's just not the right way to do it.
I guess that's what I'm getting at, you know, I don't want to.
These little vehicles, those vehicles, I mean, they're small.
I don't want to say.
They're small.
I don't want to see us just taking those, those vehicles out, though, if we can get some of the other debris, especially on the property line, because that's what the neighbors are going to be seeing after all is said and done. And this is really beyond our jurisdiction, you know. This is voluntary. We're certainly making tremendous accommodations in terms of time, but in terms of the scope, it has been broadened considerably by Mr. Alwicke and, and his council. So I respect and appreciate that. So I think the balancing of interests here, I think we're so close that I'd be comfortable with the, with the two weeks, understanding that it's vehicles plus some. And that's, I mean, the site, how it looks today versus how it looked even two months ago, is, it's dramatically different. And for me, I'm looking at the long game for these residents and these neighbors and what they're going to see. And I think that while the wait is frustrating, I think it's going to be worth it in the end for all involved. So I guess I, other comments, but otherwise, I'd make a motion that we, we agree to the extension for two weeks with the understanding that all vehicles and the sort of debris of the vehicles would be removed in that time.
Second discussion, Councilor McLean?
Yes, I actually wanted to discuss before we got to the motion phase, but that's, that's okay. I did have a couple of questions for Mr. McGrail. I don't want you to get into a this-for-that with the neighbors either, Mr. McGrail, but it is the case that four weeks ago, you seemed to indicate that all of this could have been done by this point in time. Could you elaborate on why it hasn't been done?
I just didn't make it. You know, I don't, I don't make excuses. We just weren't able to get that done within that timeframe. We're dealing with volunteers that run businesses and have, you know, obligations to their employees. And so this has been done basically on a volunteer basis. So scheduling, so, you know, that's basically, you know, no excuse. We just were not able to get it done within that timeframe. I honestly hoped to be able to, but we didn't make it.
So the smaller vehicles, it sounds like they would have been easier to remove than the truck you just showed us. I'm perhaps missing why they couldn't have been removed by this time.
Well, that, that, that machine was, is blocking two vehicles that can now be reached. So we couldn't get at those vehicles. And then the other vehicles, as I've mentioned, are on the other side of the house, that are kind of blocked in by debris. So in order to get to the other side of the house, we had to remove a significant amount of debris to get there, because you can't, as you face the house, you can't get at those vehicles from the right side. You have to go behind the house to get at them. And we had to move a number of other vehicles. I think you saw them at the last meeting, dump trucks, backhoes, front-end loaders, all stuff that had to be taken out to now access that area.
Yeah, I've seen so many vehicles, I can't remember which end is up, to be honest with you. But I would disagree with Councilor Dombrowski relative to our, what's within our jurisdiction. It seems to me that at least the vehicles are within our jurisdiction. And there, this has taken some time. And we were told that it would be done by now, so I understand the neighbors' frustrations and concerns. And also, in terms of, you know, the difference between this four-and-a-half acre property and the other property that we're not discussing, this problem was purchased by your client in January of 2021 for $25,000, and it's, you know, assessed at $300,000. So I'm not particularly, you know, impressed that, you know, you indicated last meeting that he was out there working, and he's a trained backhoe operator, and he's working every day. You know, I just think we should have had the result by now, with all due respect. But since we haven't, we'll, we'll vote on the motion.
Any additional discussion? Any, Councilor Schein?
Just a comment, and not in response to Councilor McLean, but, you know, as we've been sitting through these discussions over the last couple of months, you know, one of the questions I keep asking myself is, you know, as a town, you know, since this came to the town council, you know, if we had made different decisions, would this have resulted in a different outcome? You know, would this have resulted in getting equipment off further, more quickly, or, you know, could we have done this at a lower cost to the town? And I keep coming back to the fact that I think the answer to both of those questions is no. You know, given the state of the property and given the extreme nature of how much was there, you know, while I sympathize with the neighbors, I'm not sure that there was any way to accelerate that timeline in any appreciable way because of the situation we're dealing with. I think as, you know, Mr. Mayo mentioned, you know, had we gone in and taken the property and had to clean it up ourselves, it certainly would have cost us much more than it did to accommodate the homeowner in the hotel. And so, you know, I, I say this just to, again, sort of express our appreciation to the neighbors and their patience. I understand and I get it. It's not an easy situation for, for any of us to deal with. But, you know, just given the situation that we've been looking at, it feels to me that this has been, you know, kind of the best outcome that you can get from a really sort of tragic and unfortunate situation. And in light of that, I'm supportive of the motion to extend the date for another two weeks.
Anybody else want to speak before? No, I know, anybody else who hasn't spoken? Councilor McLean?
Just a point of clarification relative to Councilor Schein's comments. Had the town done the work, I believe the town would have been fully entitled. Yes, it may have cost money. Town probably would have been fully entitled to a lien on the property, and perhaps could have ended up owning the four-and-a-half acres. I'm just stating that that's a fact. We don't know. I mean, the prior owner of this, we don't know how all those trucks got there. We probably never will. We don't know whether it was the former owner who owned the property for, you know, decades, or whether it was the current owner who bought it in, you know, six months before the town's notice went out. So I just want, in terms of full transparency and disclosure, to say that this property, I take differently from the other property.
If I may, Madam Chair?
Please.
I would just like to say that, that my belief and my experience with this is, if it was not handled the way it was, and the town had pursued to enforce, we would probably be in the middle of a restraining order, and we'd be in court right now, and this cleanup would not have even started at this point. Because that was the avenue that was, you know, I represent this, Alwicke, and we've worked in a very cooperative fashion, and we very much appreciate that, and are going to continue that on our end. But if, I think if it had gone a different direction, my experience is, is if a homeowner is, is trying to clean up their property, that a judge, especially in the middle of a pandemic, is not going to allow an enforcement order that's going to potentially result in somebody that's going to lose their property and lose their home. I think that would be a very crude and harsh result, and most judges would not let it get to that point. So I very much appreciate how it's gone. I think it's gone efficiently, and we're going to clean this up and finish it up in two weeks.
Thank you. I just want to say something first. I, I mean, I've been dealing with this kind of as chair the whole year, and I'm very proud of the way. It took a long time. There's a lot of frustration from the neighbors. But we, as a town, and I will speak for myself, we are not in the business, I am not in the business of taking somebody's home from them, even if it's going to result in four acres that might be able to be developed. We are in, in the business of building a community, and that's what I believe we preserved here by doing what we did. Is it, was it perfect? No. But at least we preserved the dignity of this gentleman. Councilor?
Again, for clarification, Madam Chair, I am not talking about the home. I am not talking about taking anybody's home. I am simply indicating that the $25,000 purchase of, not me, Mr. McGrail, the Board of Assessors has had this property as potentially buildable for decades. In fact, it was buildable until 2005, then it was changed to potentially buildable. I'm not talking about the town taking anyone's home. The home is over here. The four-and-a-half acres that were bought at a discount in January of 2021 are over here. I'm simply focusing on the four-and-a-half acres, as I've been instructed to by the board over these number of weeks that we discuss these two matters. They're different matters. That's all I'm saying.
Well, I'll tell you this. I think maybe the assessing department wants to take another look at that property. You have the town engineer look at it, because from what I can see, it's on the flood plain.
I don't, I don't know either way.
Probably not assessed properly. And quite honestly, I think it's very limited for its development opportunity when it's in the flood plain. So.
Councilor Dombrowski?
I would just say that I have consistently looked at this through the lens of not just the homeowner, but the neighbors. And we find ourselves where we are now, and I feel like we're on the five-yard line. And we are getting a better end result than the law would otherwise provide for here. And so I do think it's a win-win. And I understand the frustration that the neighbors have. I understand that. But I'm also looking at the long game here, and it's a better result than the law provides for otherwise. We are, we are having a cleaned-up property that is far more cleaned up than would have been if we had just gone through and followed the letter of the law on this. So there has been an accommodation made, but I think an accommodation made that has resulted in a, a long-term benefit to all of those involved. So, you know, Mr. McGrail, every item that you can get off that property, in addition to those vehicles, makes an impact. And I think you recognize that. And I know you've been monitoring it, and you've been removing a lot of additional property, as you've pointed out in the past. That, to me, is the success here for the neighbors, because they're going to have that as a result. And that's, those, those items will be gone, and they'll be looking at a clearer property than they would have otherwise if you had just plucked out those. And I also appreciate what you're saying about the, the vehicles. They were buried. A number of them were buried. There was incred, and it wasn't just, you know, branches or trees or something. I mean, it was like, these things were buried under other metal and other, like, I don't even know how, what half the stuff even was, but they were buried. So the idea of just being able to pluck them out and leaving all that debris behind would not have been an attractive outcome. And so we're talking about two weeks now. We are where we are. I say we just move forward with the vote. And, and then if, in two weeks' time, we're not to the point we expect we'll be, I think that's a different discussion to be had, absolutely.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table that's been seconded for a two-week extension. Is, I don't think we've, I think we've had enough discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six to one. Sherri, Councilor McLean dissenting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. McGrail.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Property Updates B, 5 Common Street. Notice to quit. Steve?
Actually, it's going to be Mr. Mullin.
Oh, Mr. Mullin.
He needs to earn his pay.
Oh.
So on, on March 25th of this year, I sent a notice to quit to Dr. Richard Louise, who is a dentist who has long rented space at 5 Common Street, which is a town-owned building. As you know, we did so because the Board of Health needs space to expand into, in that building. I understand that this was done after Mr. Mayo had, had conversations with Dr. Louise, explaining to him that it would have to be done at some point, and that he should ready himself to, to vacate the premises. Legally, Dr. Louise was what's called a tenant-at-will. And that means that he could be removed for any reason or no reason on 30 days' notice. One of the unfortunate things about being a lawyer is that you have to say some tough things, just because it doesn't count if you don't say them. There's no nice way to put a notice to quit. I tried to word my notice to quit in as non-confrontational a way as possible, because the purpose here was not to rid the building as soon as possible of a beloved local institution. Quite the contrary, it was to engage Dr. Louise in a conversation about what would be the earliest that we realistically could free up that space. And so the notice to quit, which could have given him 30 days' notice, in fact, gave him more than 90 days. And to his credit, Dr. Louise, I understand from Attorney McGrail, who represents him, as he represents everybody else in Wakefield, he appreciates that, he appreciates the town's position and the town's willingness to engage with him. And so I've had some initial discussions with Attorney McGrail. We're going to work toward a mutually agreeable schedule for Dr. Louise to vacate the premises so that the Board of Health can expand into them.
And we've made arrangements to kind of handle the health issue in the interim.
Any questions or discussion? Councilor McLean?
I do have one question for town council. Will this involve the revocation, or whatever your correct legal term is, of the notice to quit for the time being while negotiations are pending?
No. I wouldn't want to do that, because I want to have the legal freedom to pursue an eviction proceeding, should that be necessary. I'm confident it will not be necessary. It's the same reason why we had to issue it in the first place. If I were to revoke it or rescind it at this point, we'd have to go through the whole process all over again.
Do you know whether discussions were had prior to the issuance of the notice? And I don't mean years ago, saying, Doc, someday you might have to move. Do you know whether discussions were had shortly before the issuance, so that perhaps the same deal we're talking about now might have been worked out before the notice to quit was issued?
I understand from Steve that there were discussions.
But that was, might have been, that wasn't a month ago. That was longer ago than that. So, again, the answer to your question would be no, not immediately.
Okay, okay. That's all I have, Madam Chair. I would assume that council will be working it out with council.
Councilor Santos?
I just want to make it clear that while I may not have known these negotiations were going on when Mr. McLean brought it up, I didn't need to know these negotiations were going on. That Steve is the CEO of our town. I trust what he does, and I also know that he deals with everyone that comes before him with dignity and kindness. And we have a right to. And we have a right to have a discussion with someone who's in our town-owned building that it's time that this person move on. Steve had approached Dr. Louise in the past about this. Nothing was done. So that's where the notice to quit comes. I have no doubt that we did not, this was not a surprise to the doctor. I understand he might want to stay there, but I just want to make it clear to folks watching that Steve and Attorney Mullin knew about this situation and were doing this best to take care of it. As a counselor, I didn't need to know about it necessarily. If there was an issue, I'm sure Steve would have shared it with us, but not every small management system has to come before us. I have complete faith that Steve will handle this with care in maintaining the dignity of Dr. Louise, but we need the space for an ever-expanding Board of Health that needs more room based on what's happening with the pandemic. You know, we see that.
Counsel Dobrosky.
I understand that this is a difficult situation for everybody. I guess what I don't care for in it is the way that this kind of came to us. And I guess, you know, Mr. Mayo, did Dr. Louise, or Mr. Mullin, did Dr. Louise reach out to you after getting the notice and have discussions?
The first time I think we heard was through Attorney McGrath.
And was that after our last meeting?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because I guess like for me, it just, it seemed odd that it was kind of brought up as an issue, you know, by the council, to the council. And I respect Dr. Louise, but also, and how he wants to be able to handle his affairs. And I don't think that it was appropriate that it came up in a public forum. And I, from what I understand, in a way, kind of blindsided him the way that it was brought up. And I understand the community response. He's a beloved dentist and we, and I think all of us want to make sure that we're doing all that we can for him. But I think that's the kind of situation where had, you know, had there been discussions where he reached out to you, Mr. Mayo or Mr. Mullin, and there had been some kind of dialogue kind of offline versus having this come out as this big public thing first and then kind of having to kind of deal with it. And it's not a matter of, you know, transparency or secrecy or anything like that. But I have respect for Dr. Louise and his privacy and his affairs. He's, he has a private practice and I'm thinking, you know, in my own law firm, if my own law firm were in that space, how would I without want to be dealt with? Not in the way that it was dealt with and not in the way that it was brought to the public domain in such an out way. I don't think that was right. I think that, you know, going forward, if there's to be that kind of dialogue, it should be had. I agree that we entrust our, Steve is really our CEO, we're the board, he's the CEO. We entrust him to kind of handle this day-to-day stuff. I want to be accommodating for Dr. Louise. So that all being said, I want to be accommodating, you know, Steve and I have had conversations about that. I know Steve is on board with doing that and I understand, Steve, you've since spoken with Mr. McGrath as well. Let's do what we can to make sure we get Dr. Louise the time that he needs. That's reasonable. You know, certainly, I understand there are delays. We're talking about equipment that he has to be ordering that's special in nature. We're talking about retrofitting a new space. Though all of those things take time and I've heard from a lot of folks who are concerned about that. Yeah, it sounds like 90 days. I'm no expert, but something 90 days is not enough. But I just think going forward, you know, there's a better way to have dialogue and I think we need to really respect that because there are people involved here, you know, that we're really kind of exposing in ways that I don't think is appropriate. But I'm encouraged by what we're hearing here now. You know, come back to us, Mr. Mullin, as those discussions go on. Let us know what kind of time you think is appropriate. Let's do that. The last thing we want to do is hurt this doctor, this dentist's business or all of his patients in town. But, you know, I think there's a better way that we can approach it going forward. Thanks.
Counsel McLean.
Since perhaps that was directed at me because I am the person that made it public, I just want to say that I have spoken to Dr. Louise and he indicated that he was blindsided by this, basically. Not by the 30-day nature of his tenancy, but getting the notice to quit. And they didn't know what to do. He and his wife Heidi did not know what to do. So just for full transparency, I do believe on the council. We have a difference of opinion. You know, I have to vote if the library wants a $100 donation. I realize that I don't want to get into the day-to-day operations that the town administrator has to get into, but I think we have a difference of opinion on what should be brought to the Town Council, you know, what matters should be brought to us so that we can consider them before something like this is issued. And I apologize to no one for making this public because I had to think that it has worked to the advantage of a small business that was basically, didn't know what to do. They did not know what to do. And they had no notice of this. Yes, they knew they were on a month-to-month tenancy, but they didn't see this coming. So I'm apologizing to nobody. And I think that the council should be consulted on a matter of this importance. I have seen us give many extensions and many, you know, courtesies to others. I assume we'll do that the same here, but it needed to be brought out into the open.
Counsel Dobrosky.
I respect what you're saying, Counsel McLean, but I disagree. Dr. Louise didn't ask you to bring that and make that public here. You know, so if you had a discussion with Dr. Louise, that wasn't something where he said, can you please go to the Town Council and put my private business affairs public before everyone? And that's where my disconnect is. I'm all about the extensions we're talking about. In fact, you know, we've all, I think we're, I would venture to say we're unanimously in support of doing whatever we have to do to make sure that we can have him transition as smoothly as possible. But I don't think it's appropriate to be having a conversation with someone and then coming to this body and then reporting it on their behalf when they've not asked you to do that. And that's where my concern lies. I don't think that that's not a good practice. I don't think we should be doing it.
I did not report what they said to me. I reported what I heard from a constituent and then I confirmed it.
But did he ask you to do that? And my understanding is he didn't. Because I'm understanding he was quite surprised that it came up in the way that it did. And I don't think someone like that should be blindsided. I think, you know, we owe more respect to our business people than that.
I think the council blindsided, you know, the town blindsided him. But let's, you know, let's just agree to disagree. If you want to ask Dr. Louise, you know, what do you think about the fact that this has now become public? Go ahead.
That's not the point.
Well, yeah, so I think we get the point. I feel very strongly that we were always going to negotiate with Mr. Louise, Dr. Louise, when he came to us, that there was no need to do this, that, you know, we hear from constituents all over town about many, many issues. And, you know, sometimes we talk about them in council, but many times we talk to Steve, who really takes on the day-to-day. And I think that, I mean, I agree, even with the 383 Water Street, you know, we've been dealing with people's lives here and we have to show some respect and some discretion. You know, and I think Steve, you, in working with the Board of Health, which is really kind of oversees that department, really understood what the needs, you know, are short-term and long-term. And to be speculating in addition to bringing this about what the needs of the public, that the health department are, you know, was perhaps another misstep, so.
Well, I think my takeaway is next time we do one of these things, we'll certainly bring up to the board an executive session first.
Yes, I think executive session is absolutely, because these are people's lives.
Because we couldn't do it publicly because then it would be out, so.
Right, right. Okay, so there's really nothing to vote on here. We will expect an update on the progress of the negotiations and ask that you, you know, negotiate something that is fair to Dr. Louise and provides us the space that we need for our needs for the health department. Thank you.
And I'd just say that, Madam Chair, I think that's really become more of a directive of this body. Whatever you can do to make it work, you know, for this doctor and his practice, I think we're all, you know, I think we're all unanimously in support of that. So whatever it's going to take, we'll do it.
Absolutely. Okay, item number eight, MBTA communities. 40A presentation.
All right, on to housing. So earlier last year, the state did pass changes to Chapter 40A, Section 3A. And Chapter 40A is really kind of the housing section, when you think about it. So the reason why these things, this happened was, is that the state has estimated a shortage of up to 200,000 housing units. That's not my number, that's through the Massachusetts Economic Office of Housing and Economic Development. And I will say that in the past few years, when we have met with members of the EOHED, particularly Jay Ash, the former secretary, he has always said, Steve, you have to build market-rate housing. Market-rate housing is what you should be looking at. So I guess that should have been an element of foreshadowing for me as this came down. So the other part they look at is Massachusetts is among the highest and fastest-growing home prices and rents of any state in the nation. I think we're seeing that certainly here in our town. And EOHED, much like we've done on our own zoning work here, has really tried to cluster multifamily housing near transit-created transit centers, which create walkable neighborhoods with climate and transportation benefits. And think about what we passed in 2015, which was a circle around the train station. So it provides better access to work services, increased utilization of public transit, and reduced reliance on single occupancy vehicles. This is all from the EOHED and this is what they have spoken about and even when Secretary Kenealy was here, spoke in front of the chamber, he touched on these things about a month ago. So, in, to answer that, Governor Baker posed as part of his economic bond bill in 2021, which is a $262 million bill. He passed, or the legislature passed, a zoning requirement which applies to 175 MBTA communities. And certainly, Wakefield, there's an MBTA community. I don't know why my map didn't show up. I don't know. Oh, well, it's on here. There's a map there with Wakefield in the middle of it, okay? And Wakefield has been designated as a bus community. We'll talk about that later on because it is kind of an interesting point here. So what does the law say? What does the statute actually say? The statute has a couple of areas, but number one is, an MBTA community, which Wakefield is, shall have at least one zoning district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as a matter of right. Okay? That's part of the statute. It's really very simplistic. However, I will tell you that when you look in 40A, other areas of Chapter 40A, they talk about multifamily housing being four units or more. This particular section and these guidelines talk about being defined as at least three units. So a little bit different, there's a little bit of discrepancy within the guidelines. So this district shall support a minimum gross density of 15 units per acre, that is in the statute, be not more than half a mile from the commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, or bus station. In our case, would be the commuter rail station. Have no age restrictions, so it couldn't be an over 55 community. And be suitable for families with children. Know quite what that means, but that's in the statute. Let's talk for a second about what these guidelines do not do, okay? They do not include a production mandate or requirement to build new units. This law merely requires a section or a zoning area that allows multifamily by right zoning, okay? It's an important distinction when you talk with the DHCD and when they give their seminars and what have you, they all talk about capacity. You're creating an area which has the capacity to build units, not necessarily that they will actually be built. It's an important distinction as we go forward. It does not, again, does not refer explicitly to 40B projects, which as we know allows developers to bypass local zoning where there is not enough affordable housing. I find that a particularly very troubling section of this, that it does not address affordability. And when they do speak and they talk about it, they will say that, you know, the production will depend on a lot of things, developer interest, infrastructure, do you have water and sewer capable to handle this, market dynamics, et cetera, et cetera. So it's all about capacity, not production. So the multifamily unit capacity is based on a percentage of total housing units within the community. We know what that number is. And then there is a multiplier applied to that and that represents the number of multifamily housing units that can be developed, that want to be developed as a matter of right within the multifamily district that we're supposed to create, okay? And for Wakefield's purposes, I would have thought that Wakefield would have been a commuter rail community because we have a commuter rail, which would mean that we'd have to make 15% or provide an area that could increase our housing stock by 15%. However, we have been designated through the current regulations on this as a bus community. So that's a higher percentage. So if you look at the 220 centists and you multiply that by 20% increase, we would have to create or allow the capacity be created, 2261 units, okay? That's their numbers, not mine. That's when you do the actual numbers there. If we were a commuter rail community, it would be 1,696 units, so it's a difference of 565. So where is Wakefield today in zoning? Wakefield currently has no zoning district, no zoning district, where multifamily homes, as defined by the statute, are allowed as a matter of right, okay? You can build a two-family home in a number of districts, general, mixed-use, neighborhood business and business, but as I stated before, two-family homes are not considered multifamily per the statute, okay? So that is an issue, okay? So now, so what do we do? We kind of thought about what can happen. So I, we have two commuter, two commuter rail stations, I'm starting there, and you could look at, all right, possible zoning areas. So I had our engineering department really look at the downtown and the Greenwood stations and draw a half-mile circle around it, okay? Kind of where we're going to start with this. And I think that's where every community is going to have to start to look at this. So, you know, then I got to thinking, all right, this is kind of really looking at this whole statutory thing. What does it mean? How do we actually get to that capacity number? Because at some point, we're going to have to, under the current regs, and we'll get to those in a while, create some sort of a plan that says this area can support 15 units or more per acre for density and will somehow create 2261. These are just examples. I don't want anybody to say this is what's happening because there's a lot of work to do. It's just giving you kind of an example of what may happen. So we took an area around the Wakefield Station zoning area, just kind of looked at it, just kind of, you know, you know, engineering kind of played with some streets. This is actually an area that's 214 acres. You wouldn't think that Wakefield would be that big when you think about it, but so many acres. And this could help promote or have the capacity for those areas. And when you think about having 15 units per acre, we would need 150 acres of 15 units per acre to hit the goal of the 2261. That's just math, not saying we have to do it, should do it, need to do it. That's just math of what we're looking at. I took another look, we took another look at the Greenwood area, okay? Just kind of went and did a little bit of a thing there. That's about 37 acres. Just, this is just engineering kind of pulling out some area to think, maybe this could be an area that could promote, could be looked at as having capacity. And then we also looked.
We're switching in there. You want to just.
Oh, you're switching, okay, all right. Go back a slide. I thought I was, thank you. I thought it was me. Here's another area around the North Ave Station. Just, again, examples. And we're looking at maybe, you know, would we have more per density, more area, more houses per area, not more units? So really, we're at the very beginning stages of this in an area we don't even know at this point what the guidelines are because it's still in flux. We do know that it has to be within half a mile of the train station. We do know that, okay? And we do know that it has to allow for the capacity of at least 15 units per acre, okay? And we do know that we have to create an area big enough or with enough capacity that could, could produce 2,261 units. So let's say that the town of Wakefield decides, nope, we're not going to do anything because we can opt out. We can say we're not going to do it. We can certainly say that as a community. Next slide, please. So an MBTA community that does not comply with Section 3A is not eligible for funding from the Housing Choice Initiative, the Local Capital Projects Fund, and the Mass Works Infrastructure Program. And I will say that in, that's, those three are in the statutes, although they spelled "the" right on the third one. And it also talks in the regs, though, "the" Mass Works, other discretionary grants. That's in the regs. That's nowhere in the statute. That's nowhere in the statute. So I don't really know what that means, other than the DHCD is saying they're going to take that into consideration. So that's a lot of, you know, I have not seen a statute come out like this that had this sort of a stick approach. It's very different than what we've seen come out of the legislature before. But let's, next slide, please. So what does that mean in real numbers? You may know, you may remember that we just got $2 million for Mass Works from North Ave improvements. Albion Street, a million dollars for those, those areas there. We actually went to the DHCD and lobbied for that hard and got it. Complete Streets Program, I think is a discretionary program they would be looking at. Shared Streets, another one. We just got a travel and tourism lock shop, local grant for 45,000. So these are the things that I think the DHCD will look at. So, you know, that is problematic. And as I've said before, I've never seen, you know, a statute or a law come out like this with this type of a stick approach. Next slide, please. So we do know that we have certain parts of this that are statutory. It's in the language. It's a paragraph, really. It's easy to read. The guidelines go on for pages and pages. And I think they're really an overreach from the actual statute. But they are in draft form. And one of the areas is reasonable size of district. Nowhere does it say what a reasonable size of a district should be in the statute. Okay? Doesn't say that. In the, in the guidelines, it came up with 50 acres. Okay? It does talk about the 15 density per acre, but it doesn't talk about how big the area needs to be. So that, to me, is, is an interesting dynamic there. Community designation. Why are we a bus versus a rail community? To me, I still don't quite understand that, although MBTA does seem to have some old language that says if you have a commuter rail and you have bus service, you're a bus community. I don't know why that would come through to us, but that's kind of what they've told us. Nowhere in there is there really a clear idea of credit for local initiatives. And you may recall in 2015, we went to town meeting with a pretty comprehensive zoning change. Mixed use zoning district. Again, looking around our, our commuter rail station. That actually did produce, not just capacity, but this did produce 400 units or more in that, in that area. And what to me is really great about that is that this has an affordability component of between, of it used to be up to 18%. I believe now it is 18% because there was a change on it. That created a lot of affordable units that does help us on our subsidized housing index. So that, but the problem with these is, as I see it in looking at the state regs, is that these were all granted under a special permit. Okay? Not as a matter of right. Okay? Difference is, matter of right, I can build a four-family unit on my 10,000-foot lot, no ma, if it's in the district. And I have to meet setbacks and things, but I can build a four-unit, four-family unit as a matter of right. We don't have that anywhere in the area right now. These were done by special permit. They, there was a negotiating of how many. Had to be 18% affordable, which we should really be very proud of because that helped move us forward. You know, this extension of the non-compliance penalties, talked about it before, other discretionary programs. I think that's really an overreach. That's not what was intended, directly intended by the legislature. They could have said more. They didn't. That was added on. But the regulations are not final. The MMA, and I know that the council has this, and we'll put this along with the PowerPoint on the, on the website, sent a very lengthy letter to the, to DHCD in the comment sections and also took their regs and actually did a redlined version of each area that they thought should be changed. I was proud to serve on the policy subcommittee there to look at that. So, you know, to me, there's a lot of unanswered questions right now. And I've been to a number of seminars, seminars on this. And, and even among groups of us that are talking about it, you know, some will say, well, no, Steve, I think that the special permits could count. Well, could doesn't really cut it for me. I don't know what could means. There's still special permits. It says matter of right. Well, you could have site plan review. Well, site plan review is, is a kind of a, think of it as a very lower standard of a special permit where you may just look at, you know, parking ratio, and that's it. Or traffic flow, not all the other things. So to me, that's a, an area that's still out there. Next slide, please. So what do we need to do? What do we need to do today as a council? Okay? Number one, by May 2nd, we needed to present the draft guidelines to the town council. That's been done today. And I need to submit a MBTA community form to the DHCD, which really just says that we discussed this at a meeting, that, you know, who is going to be the contact form in the town. And interestingly enough, whether or not we have, as a town, have submitted our Mass GIS parcel mapping to, to, to Mass GIS, whether we've done our, our GIS mapping to Mass GIS since January 1st, 2020. We have. We did in 2021. So where, where is the curve there? And we have to ask for any technical assistance that we would like, which I'm going to ask for about everything from, from the state on it that we can do. So I, I guess the big takeaway is that, next slide, please. And we would need to, I guess, if they keep with their timeline, to formally adopt guidelines, which means a zoning change by December 31st, 2023. So my, one of my major concerns is, is that, you know, as a community, I think we've done a great job, particularly, you know, promoting affordable housing. And we, and we specifically put that in our bylaw that allowed for, you know, things like where Tonos is, 175 North Ave, Foundry Street, 2737 Water Street. These were carefully, you know, thought out part of our bylaw. We actually went to the town, went to the town meeting, presented this, had a pretty robust discussion, you know, even before we got to town meeting through all the planning board hearings and everything. And, you know, the town took a chance on this and did some, did some very proactive work to promote housing. And I do get it that I, I agree with the state that there is a housing issue, that there are more houses needed, more homes needed. But I feel that, and I've, I've mentioned this and we've, in our groups, we've talked at the MMA, it just seems like all of that is thrown out. Like, why did you even bother doing any of that? And that's the feeling that I'm getting on that from them. So I think there's some work to do here. The other issue that really is concerning to me is that there is no affordability component here. And to me, that's almost the, the main issue is that, let's say that no changes are made, these are, these are adopted, and in many communities it happens. In each community, if you were to add, if Wakefield were to add 2,200 units of market rate housing, we'd have to add 220 units of affordable housing to keep pace with 40B. It just seems to me that it's not thought out and it's a little bit backwards. So what will happen is we will look at these things over the summer. We will have forums. We will have meetings. I'm, I'm sure they'll be interesting. And, you know, we'll go, go through this for the next, you know, few months. According to the existing timeline, if we could go back one, one slide, we would have to prevent, present a complete zoning analysis by the end of this calendar year. I frankly think that's going to be pushed forward because the regs aren't even, I don't know how I can do that because the regs aren't final. So, and I think that everything's going to be moved forward and every community will be deemed in compliance that are hitting the steps along the way. But I think there's a lot of work to do. I think that the regs are still, are still in flux, as I said. And as of today, the very long letter that the MMA and the Massachusetts Municipal Lawyers Association jointly sent to DHCD has not been answered. And that was sent on March 28th. So they received no response back. So, Madam Chair, I'm, I'm going to try to answer any questions that you have right now.
I'm sure there are some.
I'm sure there are some.
Counselor Santos?
A quick one, Steve. The, the issue that bothers me most is not getting credit for what we've done. So other communities that have done nothing, and I read about some of them in the Globe, you know, the precious communities are all up in arms. But we actually worked hard to, to address some housing issues. Do you see, I mean, there's issues with this law and how it works with 40B. Do you see the legislature, any tweaks being made if the community's pushed back?
I, I can see, well, I can see some changes being made in the, in the, in the,
In the regs?
In the regs. However, I think that is problematic because the statute does say, does not provide for, you know, affordability on it. So I, I think that there will, might have to be some tweaking going back. But I do see, I do see that's one of the most common themes that we're getting, you know, within our MMA community. Reading is in the same boat. Reading has, Reading has done a lot of 40R stuff. We haven't. We've done some, some different, we, we did our own. But Melrose has, has, has also been proactive.
Auburn is in the same boat. I was reading about them.
Yeah. So it's, oh, yeah. The planner for women is apoplectic. She said we did all this work for nothing.
I don't blame her.
Yeah. So yes, I, I do see that being talked about.
Okay. Counselor Dennehy?
So first, I just want to say is that this really makes my argument that we need a town planner even stronger. So I just want to put that plug in there that I think that's even stronger evidence of a need of a town planner. And so we have to come up, we're going to have to come up with 2,261 new units in addition to what we're doing.
This legislation requires us to create a zoning environment as stated.
Right.
As stated today, that could support, yes, 2261.
So Foundry Street doesn't count?
Not necessarily produced, but supported, yeah.
Okay. So Foundry Street doesn't count? That's?
Yeah. That's, that's, that's part of the rub. Yeah. It should. But it, it's nebulous because it came under a special permit.
Wow. So how do you support that many new units?
Well, well, here's, here's what happens is even if you put an overlay unit, an overlay unit somewhere, right? Chances are it's not going, this is probably what's really ironic. Here, it's not going to support the production of new units because they're not going to tear down Foundry Street. I mean, it's not going to happen.
Right.
It's not, it's not going to happen. So it just would have to say, hey, this area could, if developed in a certain way, could do it, but it's not going to happen.
It's already developed.
No, no, I know. No, that, that is very convoluted. I, I get it. I agree with you.
It's already developed. It's all new.
And it happens to be near the train station.
So we were just like kind of cutting edge then. We were like ahead.
We were ahead. Absolutely ahead. With an affordability component.
So then Greenwood, it would be, if they were to do this, it would be, things would have to come down and Greenwood would go up.
Well, I think that, right, you, you would say that a single family, let's say, and I don't want to make anybody alarmed, right? This isn't going to happen tomorrow. A single-family home could be a four-family or a three-family.
Or some of the things like along Main Street could be taken down and reconfigured. Yeah, that's kind of, I, I'm super concerned about this. I'm just concerned for a number of reasons in terms of, how does our master plan? How does this play with our master plan?
Well, I think our master plan will, I would imagine, talk about creating transit-oriented housing. And I imagine it will be under a special permit, which is problematic. It's a better way to plan is to have a special permit, to have a bigger set of review, to have, you know, those things going on and have an affordability component.
And then does the state ever talk about, like, when they're built, when they talk about the need to build new housing, talking about like building more sustainable housing, like using solar, mandates to use solar, heat pumps, charging stations with parking? Do they include that?
That would certainly be a separate aspect of this in a different area of the code. This, that hasn't really been talked about here, but it's probably a good argument that it should be.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because those, now you are getting into special permit issues.
And the transit housing, I mean, they have to address the, they have to address also the MBTA. It's a mess. The MBTA is so expensive. It's not the least bit affordable to go into Boston.
Right.
So I don't.
And to answer your, your, your first question, this certainly will be part, transit-oriented housing in this will be part of the master plan.
Yeah.
But as I said, I don't know. I, I like the special permit. I think the way we do it is better because there is some review. Problem is, is that not every community has embraced this.
Yeah. So with this, does this mean that they could build anything they wanted would be?
No, no, no. You, you would have a, we would have, we would craft a, a district that would allow for certain types of housing and certain numbers of units as a matter of right. Okay? It would have to, according to the current statute and regs, support a density of 15 units per acre. So would it be smaller lots and a number of three families along the corridor? Or what have you? So there would have to be a, it's one way of handling it.
Okay. And then will we have any impact in terms of being able to build in commercial use? Because that's the thing is like the mixed use is, is adding in like the commercial element to kind of create, what are they called? 15-minute communities where you can shop?
So, so an overlay district, there would be an underlying zoning that probably would allow for that mixed use and allow for commercial, you know, something in that area. An overlay would go over that to allow this other type of, of, of building. But again, I think your underlying zoning would probably have a lot more to do with a special permit aspect of it, and then this would not. So would be, i- it's going to get very, it's going to get very, I don't want to use the word complicated, but it is going to be a lot of moving parts to this.
I'm just concerned too is that I think that the state needs to be then providing all these communities that are doing this, that are part of the MBTA community, a lot of resources.
Yes.
I mean, I don't think it can just simply be a calculation of, you know, how many new students, because now we really are talking about the need that we're going to need to find room to build new schools. Not just even in addition. I don't even know what schools can do in addition, but new schools. And I just think that this, the state, you know, what we're doing is, you know, I think it's important. I think we have a shortage in housing. I get that, but I just, I, I don't. The state just seems to be saying you need to do this without any kind of funding. It's like an unfunded mandate.
Actually, the opposite. They're going to take funding away if you don't.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's, yeah, very punitive, very punitive. So it's, that's concerning to me. So I've talked enough. So, thank you.
Counselor Chines?
Thank you. So I have so many comments and questions. I will limit it, I promise. But I, I do want to start just by echoing Counselor Dennehy's comment about the state of MBTA service to our town. I mean, frankly, it's laughable for us to be considered a quote-unquote bus community when the bus access we have is one lousy route that doesn't go anywhere where people actually lives, that doesn't come very frequently, and that's really expensive to use. You know, if we were actually served by like a real affordable, accessible bus service, I get it. But I, I, I can't even fathom the fact that that is what we are considered under, under this guidance. And so certainly hope that's something that we can influence at the state level. And I also hope, quite frankly, at the state level, I mean, the promise needs to be that if this is going to be something that's required for communities in the MBTA catchment area, I think the commitment from the MBTA has to be there to improve service, to make service more affordable, and not put us in a position where we found ourselves in the last couple of years where service has been cut. I think, you know, we felt and part of our argument against some of the service cuts that the MBTA made was proposing about a year and a half ago, was we've made these, you know, investments in transit-oriented development. And for the T to come back and say, well, we're not going to run commuter rail service on weekends or evenings, or we're going to cut your bus lines, it, it just doesn't hold water in my mind. But I'll stop that rant for a moment and just a couple of questions. One is, just to make sure I understand, the lack of an affordability requirement in this, would that necessarily supersede our inclusionary zoning provisions? Or are our provisions tied to the special permit that isn't applicable in this case?
Well, I think you could have a, you, you could have, and I think that every community will probably do an overlay district would be my guess because that's, so you could have a underlying zoning that allowed certain things. Okay? We then have our overlay that we currently have from 2015 that allowed mixed use and with, with that. You would then have an additional overlay. So it wouldn't be pro- So it wouldn't be precluding it, it would be, you know, you, you could take advantage of a separate zoning path.
So we, we could have an affordability requirement for units, you know, buildings over a certain unit count as a matter of an overlay district.
Exactly, we have that now.
That wouldn't, that wouldn't be obviated by chapter 48?
No, it would be, but, but that doesn't mean someone couldn't go down the path.
Yep, okay. And the second question I have is just to sort of help me understand, I'm trying to visualize the density requirement, the 150 uni, or sorry, the fif-
Fifteen units per acre.
Fifteen units per, per acre. Do we have a sense as to where we are today in different areas of town? Like if I look at areas, for example, sort of along the, the commuter rail, you know, stop by downtown, you know, some of those neighborhoods where you're kind of looking at, you know, Emerson Street, you know, Cedar Street on, on the west side of the tracks, it would seem to me that those probably are somewhat densely populated in that, that's sort of 15 units per acre, but I don't know if we've ever calculated that.
Those areas that maybe have two families.
Mostly two families.
Two, I don't think that they're 15 units per acre.
So maybe a request for a future discussion, it would be helpful, and, and I don't know if this is something that our, our, our friends in the engineering department can work their magic on. It'd be helpful to understand almost by kind of region of town what our current density is. Just again, to be able to visualize what we're actually talking about with 15 units per acre. And then finally, just a comment, I mean, we've talked about the master plan here. I, I wanna put in a plug that I think this has to be integrally, integrally involved with the master planning process. I, I think this is very much part of those discussions because obviously we can't do this in parallel and kind of slap a zoning district in something that's not envisioned as part of the master plan.
It definitely will be, an MAPC is, was very much involved in our master plan, is also very much involved in the technical assistance aspect of this, so.
Okay, great, yeah, just wanna make sure we don't lose that thread. And with that, I'll, I'll, I'll yield.
If I could, could answer one of Jonathan's questions.
Answer questions.
In our, no, in, in one of your comments really, so, in the MMA letter, which I'll resend, I know you all have it, and it's kinda one of their first bullet points. While the current focus is on crafting workable guidelines, which they've talked about, it's important to note from an overarching policy perspective that section 3A we're talking about here is an inadequate substitute for the needed improvement and expansion of transit facilities, which would be the true driver of housing development. So I think the MMA hit that right on the head, out of the gate.
I thought that letter was excellent, and I know you were part of that committee, Mr. Mayo, and appreciate your work on that.
Thank you.
Counselor Demersky? Or McLean, I don't know who was first.
Thank you for this, Steve, it's, it's helpful information. I, I think there's maybe like 175 MBTA communities in town, right, too?
175, yes.
Yeah. I guess one of the questions I have, kind of picking up on this idea of density, and a new Counselor Dennehy has mentioned before, I'd also be curious to know not just what our current density is, you know, per acre, but if, if there's any way of determining what other community's density is per acre, comparable communities to ours. Because I have the sense, and I think Counselor Dennehy may have the same sense, that we've come to, to understand that we have, we're denser here in Wakefield than a lot of our kinda counterpart communities, if you will. I think that'd be interesting for us to know, kinda where we stand.
Certainly when you look at some of the special permit area, Foundry Street, Albion Street.
Right.
Certainly that's, you're going up, so you're not creating much more acreage, right? You're not using much more acreage when you go up.
Right, I mean, if you, if just think about that, I mean, just, you know, Foundry and 175 North Ave, for instance, but then behind that, behind the Dunkin' Donuts, just off Albion, on Tuttle.
We can get that, certainly, yeah.
You know, I don't know to what extent other communities have been able to do that type of analysis, but I think it'd be important for us to understand kinda how we stack up to a lot of other communities.
I, I think that data, I think I've seen that data.
I'm sure MAPC has.
That, that's all I have, thank you.
Counselor McLean?
Yeah, Steve, it kinda looks like this is a three-family centric kind of piece of legislation, so doesn't seem, it doesn't seem like we'd get credit for all the development around Foundry Street, just based on that.
And even, even when you look at them, and exactly, we don't. Yeah, but even, even when you look at chapter 40A, chapter 40A in other areas talks about a multifamily as being four units. And this regulation talks about three units. So even that's a little bit confusing when you, you know, why isn't it consistent within the entire act? But that's the, that, well, they consider multifamily as the minimum of being three units.
So it could be more?
It could be more, yeah.
And the?
But I found that was a weird place to start, I just thought it was strange.
I think the whole thing's strange, yeah. And to Counselor Dennehy's point, you know, Counselor Chines and I were involved in the land use master plan meeting in the same breakout room. And when I asked about 40A, the gentleman from, is an MAPC, indicated, well, that's kind of on hold. So I agree with you, how are we supposed to do public hearings from May to 2022 to December when, I guess, there's gonna be further movement in these regulations? Hopefully narrowing them more, more than a bit, I would hope. I've made my opinion known to my state representative on this. And I was wondering as well, I think on the EOCD website, they say basically they wanna hear from folks. Should they be hearing from more than the MMA, for example? Should they be hearing from town council members, concerned citizens?
Sure, I think that that would be absolutely appropriate.
Is there a particular contact person that's dealing with the regs, do you know?
You know, they, they had, the public comment period actually had once passed. I don't know if they reopened it again, I think Secretary Canely actually said they had reopened it when he last spoke to us. I know that one community just said, to their, they would write a letter, they agreed with the MMA letter. That was what they were gonna say. But yes, I think they'll, I think they're still taking comments.
Right, so despite the fact that, as Counselor Chines said, we may have, still have the ability to have moderate or low-income units, we're still faced with the potentiality of 2,200, the capacity of 2,200 units at our market rate.
In the current, in the current regs, yeah.
In the current regs, right, okay. Yeah, I, I, I think this is pretty shocking. I think you indicated to me that the MMA actually opposed this legislation, is that correct?
In this form, yeah.
In this form, right.
And the MMA actually felt very disgruntled, not to be, you know, wanted to be part of the conversation, and this was really just dumped on everybody. I was, I was frankly surprised that when it came out, it didn't get a lot of play in 2021.
Right, because it's law right now.
Yeah, it's law, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I, I guess I'll just add that I think probably the stick comes from just the need for housing across the state. And I don't think it's, you know, it's, it's not one community, and, and everything you said is definitely, I mean, are there ways for us to be, obviously, kind of pushing back on some of this? But, but also working, and I think this goes to the master plan. I sat, I, I watched a ZBA meeting where a family couldn't put in a, an additional dwelling unit or a in-law apartment because it would change the footprint of the building. So that essentially, the solution was build a single family and come back and then build on your in-law once you've got your, and that, that's just wrong. I mean, we, we really should be allowing in-law apartments, and I don't, I mean granny pods, there's, there's a lot of options now. And I don't know whether that will fit directly into the 40A, but I certainly think that the, the spirit of what this is trying to accomplish, I'm in favor of. And to Jonathan's point, certainly getting the, the MBTA working more, more favorably for us would also allow us to build less parking and to do, you know, one parking per unit. And then that in turn gives more opportunity to build, to build housing when we're not taking up so much space for parking. So I think, I think that, I actually am very in favor of the spirit of this. I just really think that we should, you know, we should get credit for what we've done and, but, but not lose sight that what we need is additional housing.
Counselor Demersky?
I think just looking at the capacity piece of things too, I, I'm very troubled by this because I don't think we have the capacity as a community, especially within a half-mile radius. But if we are looking at opportunities, the obvious place that comes to mind that I think continues to be, if there is such a thing as underdeveloped within this town these days, is right along the, the Main Street corridor, when you have all of these, you know, two, like one and two-story buildings. When you think about like, like Middle Main, for instance, we think about the Envision Plan from the Rockery, say, down to the Junction. There is, I think that if we are, if we're going to do that, there are so many opportunities there. You know, I think it's, partly it's working with our economic development director, it's private landowners, and I understand that, and each person owns their own, and, you know, we can't obviously force sales, no, no, would I encourage that? But that to me seems like, that checks a lot of boxes because we have like, you know, one-story buildings there, two-story buildings there, many of which, you know, are not in great shape. But the idea of having a, a couple stories of, of housing and then a commercial down below, you know, this mixed-use idea, that to me seems like it would have the, the least impact on the quality of life for neighboring community, you know, like to, to our, our neighborhoods within our community. And it, it would present as having the best potential to be able to achieve a goal of, of having additional housing, but in a more thoughtful way than, than we probably have. Cause right now, I feel like we're talking about, how can you cram more units into these very small parcels? And it's, it's, it's gonna just dramatically change the character of this town in so many ways. But I think that's, that's on the upside, an opportunity that, to the extent we can, we can encourage that, I think we should because I think that's important.
Anybody else?
Can I, can I just ask Steve? Ryan, can we go back to the timeline? I just wanna, thank you for this presentation, Steve. I just wanna just talk a little bit about timelines and maybe some ways of just making sure we keep those who wanna be kept up to date, up to date. So, you know, it's a pretty long timeline, so we, you're ahead of schedule on May 2nd. And then it sounds like, congratulations, that's great, checkmark. You know, I, I'm wondering if we could maybe create a website where a lot of these materials, including this presentation and the MMA letter and anything we do is just kind of in one place? Cause I think the final thing, right, this'll be a meeting at, a vote at town meeting, right?
Probably eventually, yes.
Eventually, like that's, that's the final, cause we don't vote on that, that's a town meeting.
Should we have a zoning bylaw change?
Right, it'll be a town, town meeting sometime in 2023. But I think like maybe having a dedicated website where people can just find the answers, they're not looking through, you know, our agendas. I think that would be really helpful, and as we get more stuff, just put it up there. And something else just to have up there is, as both Counselor Dennehy and Counselor Chines talked about was the master plan, there's a master plan survey out right now. So I encourage everyone to, I think they can still submit, right?
April 27th.
Two, two more days? Yes, so two more days, I did mine over the weekend, so, you know, fill out the master plan. And, and we should, you know, opportunities to weigh in. We're gonna have public meetings according to that timeline. You know, there'll be lots of opportunity for people to weigh in. Starting with, there's, we're still gathering information, cause this is not finalized by any means.
Right, I mean, I, I, I think that for our purposes today, or for mine today, had to hit those two first items because then we're in non-compliance.
Yep.
I don't know what we're complying with, but we, we'll be in compliance for now.
Well, they're not gonna help us if we don't comply with easy stuff.
Yeah, so.
Counselor Chines?
Just, I, I think Counselor Bott's suggestion about having a, a landing page on the website for, for this is great. I would maybe also ask, is, as there are opportunities for comment to the MBTA to come, that come up with their capital plan, with, you know, bus route changes, with things like that, that maybe we could use that as a place to, you know, collate some of that information as well, so that there's sort of a one-stop shop for people who wanna engage in some of these opportunities to, to provide feedback to the state.
Sorry, Counselor Dennehy?
And can I just say one more thing is that if this plan goes through with the state, is that I think that there is an obligation to make our commuter rail handicap accessible. Because this is the perfect opportunity to, for people who need the commuter rail to be able to use it and they can't access it, so.
Yeah.
And, and a new fence at Greenwood?
Yes.
That we've been asking for, that isn't rust-inducing?
Yeah, exactly.
Well, if the handicap accessibility was 50 million according to the MBTA, what's that fence?
Probably 60 million. I, I really do think, you know, we, we do, we do push back on the MBTA, sometimes successfully, usually not. But we, you know, this, this has been a long discussion about them cutting bus routes, cutting commuter rail times. It's really hard to, to commute and get to work by nine o'clock right now, you know, if you're taking the commuter rail. And, and even harder to go to games at, at the Garden because they've just cut back the, the hours. So there needs to be a little better partnership between commuter rail, MBTA, and the state as they're trying to, you know, develop new housing, which is a goal that we can all support. But yeah, I think as vocal as we can get on that is a good thing.
Okay, you have what you need, Steve?
I do, thank you very much, thank you.
All right. Item number nine, policies and agreements, starting with the review of the flag policy. I don't know who wants to start here. We, so we had asked Mr. Mullen to put a, a policy together based on what we heard from the Human Rights Commission. I know there's been lots of discussion in town about it, very good feedback.
And some bad feedback.
And some not so healthy and, yeah, accepting feedback, certainly. But, but I know we've all listened to it. And I really respect the Human Rights Commission for reaching out to the Veterans Board. So I don't know, Anne, do you wanna report on what you're hearing and then?
Sure, is, is Benny gonna be here?
I don't know, is, Sherry, is Benny on? From the Human Rights Commission?
Benny is on, yes.
Oh, excellent, we, yeah, we can't, we're still looking at the presentation.
We're just seeing the question and comments page. There's Sherry, there we go.
Excellent.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, bye. Why don't you just introduce yourself and bring us up to date?
Yeah, so I am Benny Wheat, live at 404 Miriam Street in Wakefield, and the chair of the Wakefield Human Rights Commission. Let's see, so I, actually, is Paul Consigliere in, is he on as well? No, okay. So I did go and speak with the Veterans Advisory Board last week, which was a fabulous meeting. I'm really pleased that I had the opportunity to join them. Just let me put my phone on silent. And that was a helpful meeting, I got a lot of like feedback and ideas from them about the flag policy. The, I would say the headline from that meeting, for me at least, was that the, the Veterans Advisory Board, I think as a body and also many of them or all of them as individuals, shared that they are excited and in favor of flying the Juneteenth flag and the Pride flag in Wakefield, but they are not okay with flying it on the same flag pole, flying either of them on the same flag pole as the American flag. So we were sort of talking about some options and ideas around that. And their pitch was, can Wakefield install new flag poles? Like one or two new flag poles kind of flanking or next to the, the flag pole at Town Hall perhaps that flies the American flag? And that way there would be some options for flying these flags or if there ever are other flag requests that come before the town. So that was it, the sort of like ideal scenario that they proposed. And there are some, some additional possible ideas, but that was kind of like the one that had the most enthusiasm. And I also feel certainly great about that. I can also share, so then during that meeting, there was a little bit of conversation about the cost of what that would be, which I have no idea what the cost is to install a flag pole. They had mentioned perhaps a fund that the Veterans Advisory Board have some, some input about. But after that meeting, I got an email from Marion Dennehy, who's on the Veterans Advisory Board, saying that she had gone to the, the Council of Clubs of Wakefield and asked them for funds to install some flag poles. And they committed $500 each to install, to, to put towards the installation of two flag poles in Wakefield, which I thought was like totally unexpected and, and amazing to me. So that was something that happened. So that's perhaps one ask that I have of the council is, would it be possible to install one or two new flag poles in order to accommodate this request or future requests? And I will also say, I don't know how long it takes to install a flag pole, possible, I don't know. Anyway, it might not be like a short-term solution that we have for the next couple months. I've reached out to the BB Library because now that I'm thinking about flag poles, me and the rest of the HRC are like looking at all the flag poles in town. One option that I realized hadn't come up was the BB Library has two flag poles on their property, one has the American flag and one is currently vacant. So I reached out to Catherine- So I reached out to Catherine McDonald and asked about the possibility of flying the Pride and Juneteenth flags on that vacant flagpole. She is, I think, waiting until after this meeting, this evening, and if the policy moves forward with the possibility of flying flags on other flag poles in town besides the Civic Center, she's going to reach out to the trustees, the library trustees, and see, because I think they're in charge of sort of facilities related to this. So that could be a possibility for the short term. So, these are all some updates about what's going on.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Thanks for doing all that work and collaborating with some of the other areas who had some concerns. So I guess we can, I don't know, anybody want to just talk, and then we can see where we want to go with the policy? Yeah, do you want to talk as a liaison?
Yeah, I mean, I just think that it's a, I think that it's a really great, thank you, Benny, for reaching out to the Veterans Board. And I think that that's really kind of symbolic of our community, is that we're kind of all working together, and that's what we hope, is that, and finding a solution that works for both. And I think that adding that second flagpole is a great option. I think that, I don't know how quickly we can add a second flagpole, whether or not we can accomplish this for this year or not, but I think that, I think that the Pride flag waving, whether it be on a separate flagpole, is just fine for me, because I think the whole point of it is to show the people in our community that we're inclusive, and to show people visiting our community that we're inclusive. And I think that having that at Town Hall on a separate flagpole delivers that message loud and clear. And so I think that it's a great solution, and it achieves what is intended by waving the Pride flag. So, should I make a motion? Or are we too early for a motion?
Let's just, yeah, let's do one more discussion.
So as much as, and Benny, thank you so much. What a great compromise to have this. And although we, certainly, there's nothing against flying a flag with the American flag, as we've done for two years in the past, I think it's a wonderful compromise. As much as the trustees have control over the library, that's our property, right? Town property, or do they? And I would assume that they will welcome the ability to fly both flags on that empty flagpole.
So, Madam Chair, under Chapter 78, Section 11, the library trustees, quote, "have the custody and management of the library and reading room and of all property owned by the town relating their to," end quote. So I think it's their call. I've been in touch with Catherine McDonald, and she believes that the library trustees want to set policy consistent with and in concert with the town council.
Excellent. Good, that seems like a great short term, because I can't imagine we're going to be able to put in two new flag poles, or flag poles based on steel shortages pricing and everything by the time June rolls around.
Never even thought about that. A process of...
And we're talking two new flag poles, like, one, are you thinking one at the Town Hall and maybe another one at the Civic Center? Or is there any discussion of location? Counselor Chines?
Just maybe to share my own thoughts.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, Benny, did you want to?
I'm not sure if that was a question for me or not.
I'll defer to you to respond to that if you have one, otherwise I'm happy to jump in.
I don't know that I particularly have one. I think in the Veterans Advisory Board meeting, I think the idea came up of having it be at Town Hall. I will say that in Marion Dennehy's email regarding the funds from the Council of Clubs, she mentioned the Common, but I would want to circle back, because my understanding was that the flagpole on the Common is the flagpole at the Veterans Memorial Common, and I don't know that, I don't know, anyway. So I would want more input about that. I don't have really a solid answer right now.
Okay. Counselor Chines?
No, thank you. And thank you, Ms. Wheat and everyone, for kind of thinking through this. I, you know, this is an issue, obviously, that people had strong feelings about, and I'm glad that, you know, you and the members of the Veterans Advisory Board were able to kind of come together and talk through this in a civil and really productive way. I love the idea of doing second flagpoles. I think it's a really thoughtful solution to this. My preference would be certainly seeing a second flagpole at Town Hall.
Yep, absolutely.
And then, I don't know how much flagpoles cost, or, you know, what the effort would be, but I think if we did have the opportunity to do a second flagpole at the Americal as well, I'd be supportive of that. But certainly for me, you know, the priority would be Town Hall, you know, just given that I think that that is the most visible location for a flagpole. I think it represents sort of the seat of government of town, and so I'd love to see a second flagpole there.
Anybody else?
I think that there's some other considerations here that make this in some ways premature, but also a broader discussion to be had. And I don't think that this is something that should be voted on tonight. I think that the flagpole that's available very prominently in front of the library makes sense, because it's, there's a flagpole on either side. So I recognize that, that's a very prominent location. This is an ongoing, you know, and looking at even the policy, we're talking about content neutral rules. And the policy, as I'm reading it, Mr. Mullen, correct me if I'm wrong, it doesn't say directly that the town council is approving each of these. It makes reference to the town administrator when he has to, you know, make exceptions and whatnot. And it also talks about like a variety of poles at this point, and even specific locations, as he was directed to do from our last meeting. But obviously, this dialogue has changed. But for me, the bigger concern that I have, it relates to the Shertliff versus City of Boston case, which is before the Supreme Court now. And that's an issue, there's yet to be a decision on that, in the US Supreme Court. But it deals with this idea of content. And how, in that particular case, I think there were something like 284 flags that were approved, one that was not, because there was a religious undertone to that particular flag. And so there's a real discussion now, and there's a real determination yet to be made, but one that will be made in terms of what authority and municipality with, using a public space, has in terms of kind of picking and choosing what can be flown and what cannot be. And I think, you know, we've, this isn't about the Pride flag or the Juneteenth flag, and I think we all are behind that and understand that. It's a bigger issue than that, and it's more the issue of, if, are we going to be in the business of selecting, you know, some kind of criteria, determining what kind of criteria should be applied if someone is looking to put a flag that is not one of those two flags? And what does that criteria look like? What are the standards that we use? And I don't think we just do it on an ad hoc basis. I don't think, you know, I don't think we kind of like determine community standards that way, like this body, you know, at any given point in time. But I think also, the Shertliff case is going to be very determinative and instructive to us in terms of how we can even address these issues going forward. So for purposes of getting us through Pride Month and the celebration of Juneteenth, I would suggest that we authorize, or I guess like we can't, but we encourage, or maybe just take like a vote, like in support of, the available flag being used, and hope that the library trustees follow suit on that. But I don't think we should be getting into ordering more flagpoles, I don't think we should be getting into doing anything beyond that at this point. Let's see where things shake out from the Supreme Court decision, and then let's create some kind of a more thoughtful policy, if there is one to be had, about how we're going to do this going forward. And then from there, we can talk about the mechanics. Like, I'm less concerned about, you know, ordering a flagpole, I'm more concerned about, what does this mean? Because there are, I mentioned last time unintended consequences, and there are a lot of things that have come to my mind since then, where there could be a group that could be looking for a flag, that I can assure you, everyone is not going to be supportive of. And that could be, you know, like, you know, one example, and it's been a hot button issue, a boosters club wants to put up the Warriors' flag, the Warriors' flag that, you know, the old, the logo that has, you know, was the subject of debate last year. How do we stop that? Or do we stop that? Should we stop that? Should we encourage that? You know, like, that's the question, I guess, that people are going to ask. And we're going to have a lot of those kind of, I don't know, what do we do? How do we handle it? And I think, let's see what, you know, the Supreme Court says on that, gives us some direction, and then let's be more thoughtful about how we want to handle this. Because if there's a religious group that wants to put up a flag, they're going to make, you know, an argument that, you know, just like Camp Constitution did in this particular case, that they have a right to do that, and they've rented space. And that's a reasonable argument to be made. But I don't, I don't know, I don't think we should be calling balls and strikes, is what I'm getting at. And I'm not taking a position either way, but I don't, let's not conflate it being the Pride and Juneteenth flags with the broader issue of the idea of a flag, because I think we create some issues. So that would be what I would encourage us to do.
Counselor Chines?
Just a question, maybe through you to Mr. Mullen. My recollection when we approved the original flag policy is that we were tying to sort of the terms of use of town facilities, which I think were intended to at least get a, you know, some of this question, this really great question that you raised, Counselor Dombrowski, around, you know, what would be appropriate to fly and what would not be appropriate to fly. And I admit, I'm a little rusty on sort of what those terms of use were, just given that we did this three years ago. But I don't know if we have any insight on that, or, Mr. Mullen, if you're able to share any insight on the fly.
From the start, my concern has been, are we going to be forced someday to hoist the Confederate flag?
Yeah.
Okay, or the Nazi flag, or whatever. And Counselor Dombrowski has summarized my concern on that point very well. And the tension in the law here is between, is between two concepts that everybody agrees are entirely valid, but are ultimately in potential conflict. On the one hand, clearly, the town as an entity has a right to speak. We have a right, for example, to have a kiosk by the lake, where the DPW explains, here's how you dispose of dog waste, here's where you're going to, you're supposed to throw things away, this is good to do for the lake, this is bad. That's municipal speech. When we do that, we don't have to let 10,000 flowers bloom, we don't have to invite conflicting voices. On the other hand, if we are going to create a public forum, then we have to allow anybody who wishes to participate on the same basis, and we can't engage in viewpoint discrimination. So the policy that I last worked on, and this is dated April 11th, tried to focus on the concept of municipal speech. It said that it focused on the nature of the group that was asking for the use of a flag. And that group either had to be a public body of the town, as defined in the open meeting law, such as yourselves, or a department of the town, like the DPW, or a nonprofit organization recognized by the IRS, which is organized chiefly to support an entity described in either of those two. And that would, the only one that generally comes to mind there is, like, Friends of the Library. Though, you know, Counselor Dombrowski brings up a good point about the logo. Potentially, you might have a 501(c)(3) that styles itself as a supporter of Wakefield Scholastic Athletics. So maybe they would qualify. But that was the concept here.
Counselor Chines?
And, Tom, I love that concept. I'm with it, though, because the Shertliff case scares me a little bit. I don't think we should absolutely trust that the trustees will do the right thing and allow Juneteenth and the Pride flag to fly. But I am nervous about what Shertliff says. So I don't think we should be moving forward, I agree with you, on placing other flags until we know, because this policy might come right up against what the Supreme Court's doing, and we all know that the tenor of the Supreme Court right now, I have a feeling it will. And I am concerned what groups will be able to fly flags there. So I agree with you with the holding back on ordering poles, which I just looked up one, 25-foot, $1,400. So, but the cost, the cost isn't the issue. For me, I just think Shertliff, I want to hear what the Supreme Court says about that, and if our policy contradicts it.
Counselor Chines?
So for those of us around the table who are not lawyers, if the policy that we had was limited to, you know, I think as I'm looking at the policy, Mr. Mullen, that you wrote, I mean, a public body of the town, a department of the town, is very clear. Maybe we get into some ambiguity of the nonprofit organization, so I'm going to ignore that for a second. But if the policy were limited to, you know, kind of numbers one and two, the public body or the department of the town, I guess, help me understand how the Shertliff decision could impact with that. I mean, if we basically say that we're not allowing the flying of any flag on town property that isn't explicitly supported by an entity that is part of the town of Wakefield, does that provide us with some protection?
We still have plenty of reason to be worried. What I'd be worried about is the Human Rights Commission asking us to put up this flag or that flag. And of course, they're going to advocate for flags that are, you know, totally unobjectionable. But then if somebody from an outside group, like the American Nazi Party, says, well, we want to rent space to hold our meeting in the Americal Civic Center, and we're going to ask the Human Rights Commission to recognize our human rights by making the same request of the town council with respect to our flag. And, you know, the Human Rights Commission would presumably say, no, that's not consistent with human rights. And then we're off to the races. Ultimately, the distinction I tried to draft into this policy bleeds into the issue of viewpoint neutrality. There's no way to avoid it completely.
Counselor Dennehy?
Could we do something, like, how is the HRC connected to the town? What is that relationship? It's not a department, it's, what is it?
It's a board.
It's a board? Okay, so...
And so it actually satisfies the first definition here. A public body of the town is defined in Chapter 30A, Section 18.
Okay, okay. So if we just had boards, then wouldn't that avoid, you know, wouldn't that just be the boards in town? We still don't, wouldn't that avoid, like, the Nazi flag, or?
The problem is, as I understand it, we, the HRC and others try to tie the groups that are renting space in the Americal Civic Center to the use of the flagpoles. And again, it's unobjectionable in most cases, what about the objectionable case? So I come back to, we may ultimately face a viewpoint neutrality objection by somebody who says, I want to rent that space, and I want the same privileges as the other groups that have rented space and whose banners have been honored by the town.
Counselor Chines?
Thank you. And so trying to push the question a little bit further, so to the extent that we had a policy that was not tied to the use of the space and was limited to town bodies, and setting aside the fact that, you know, obviously, we can't control the litigious nature of any group that wants to have a flag flown, and, you know, who knows what the future will hold there, but, you know, would we be in a, would we be in a more comfortable place, again, if it were limited to just requests from town bodies, full stop, regardless of the facility use or things like that?
Well, that's actually what we've done in this policy. There's nothing here about facility use.
Well, it does say, it does talk about the duration of use tied to when town property is rented or reserved. Sorry, where is that? 3B.
Okay. No, I'm sorry.
And so, assuming, I think to Counselor Dombrowski's point, I think, given the nature of the discussion we've had, we probably do need to go back and make some revisions to the policy that's here anyway. But I guess just trying to understand, again, the limits of where we think our risk may be, if it is solely limited to town groups without reference to facilities that someone may or may not be renting.
But then the argument is going to be about the viewpoint neutrality of the town group.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So the argument would be, hey, Human Rights Commission, you've asked in the past for the Juneteenth flag, you've asked for the gay Pride flag, and now we want you to ask for our flag, which means as much to us, and we're Wakefield residents too, perhaps, as the other, as the other flags mean to other groups. Whose definition of human rights prevails? of human rights prevails?
Counselor Dombrowski.
I think it also can't be lost that we're talking about how to be as restrictive as possible to limit this to boards, which I guess basically really means the Human Rights Commission, because it's not like the ZB is likely to be asking us to, like, fly a flag. And if that's the case, then, I mean, it's kind of like ironic that the body that's supposed to be looking at inclusivity, you know, i.e. the HRC, would be the only ones that would be enabled to be able to fly flags, because a lot of other groups that are looking to be inclusive within our community that might not be affiliated with the HRC, you know, under what we're talking about, would in fact be prohibited from doing so. So that also adds another layer of complexity to this as well. I mean, if we're going to be flying flags, then I think people of every stripe need, you know, have a right to be able to do that. Like, that becomes a First Amendment argument. But, so I don't think we can, I think it's us limiting it to only, you know, the HRC will be the arbiters of community standards and viewpoint. I think that's unfair and inappropriate. But then by opening up and being as broad as possible, I think you have a lot of the pitfalls that Mr. Mullen has done an excellent job of laying out for us. And so there's a lot, there's lots to unpack here with this that goes beyond, for purposes of what the HRC is requesting for the pride flag and Juneteenth, I think it would behoove us to, you know, encourage the library trustees to, you know, endorse that request. And I think we need to see where things fall at the national level, and then tailor perhaps a policy that is better aligned with, you know, what the law will be.
Counselor Chines.
So the other question I have on this is, wouldn't, even sort of using the library, I mean, it feels like we still have a lot of work to do on the policy in light of the case and in light of the discussions we've talked about today. I guess I'm looking at this as almost separate from the question of a second flag pole, right? Because we're talking about flying the flags on a second flag pole, as it is with the library. The legal challenges and questions that I think we've raised still apply to that situation, whether we talk about building another flag pole somewhere else or not. I guess my, my feeling would be, I, you know, I would like to see us move ahead investigating a second flag pole on Town Hall. I would also like to see us spend, it sounds like, perhaps, you know, more considerable time on the policy, you know, kind of addressing some of these very, very good questions that we've talked about. But I'm not sure that those things can't happen in parallel, I guess, is the point that I'd make.
I think the other concern, though, just to keep in mind with all this, is that we don't have, the library trustees don't have a flag policy. They don't have a policy at present. So this would really have to, I think they should be very careful to, if they were, are to approve this, to have this only as a one-off. Because what would then stop some hate group from approaching the library trustees and saying, well, you just flew that flag, so we're now asking for you to fly ours? They have no policy and no standards to follow. And so I'm just trying to, like, figure out a stopgap, you know, like, a stopgap here for, because I know HRC is making a request. I think it's a reasonable request, and that's where we fall. But, I mean, Mr. Mullen, I don't know, you know, what your thoughts are relative to that, because are we then, you know, to your point, violating, you know, viewpoint neutrality by even allowing the trustees to do that?
Well, one entirely plausible possibility here is that sometime in the fall, we get a decision in the Shertlift case, and your board decides, we're just going to have the American flag and the POW flag, period. Nothing else flies from our flag poles. So I think you want to bear that in mind in deciding whether to spend money on new flag poles. And I guess I wouldn't worry too much about a one-off decision by the library trustees to fly the pride flag for a month, because they might all, well, again, throughout town, we might end, well, end up very soon adopting a policy of not advocating anything through flags other than the fact that we're Americans and the fact that we want the return of POWs.
So you're saying we have a short period, perhaps. The risk period is shorter because there may be a decision made.
We may be in the last days of a golden age. That's right.
Can I ask something? Would this apply to painting crosswalks in rainbow colors, right? I mean, so any expression, because the First Amendment would apply to all of those.
Yeah.
Counselor Chines.
Just to point out another issue. So we actually do have a flag policy in place today.
Exactly.
And so I think that's the other thing that, you know, we need to think about is, you know, it's not like we're starting from a place where we haven't allowed the flying of, I mean, we've allowed the flying of flags for three years, you know, at the Americal, and, you know, we haven't rescinded that policy from a council perspective. And so I guess is, and this is where I, you know, be interested to hear thoughts, and again, particularly some of the attorneys in the room who've spent more time studying Shertlift than I have, which is none. I guess I'd be curious to get your thoughts on, you know, what, if anything, we do with the existing policy. Or do we let that ride out for, for the foreseeable future and until, unless there's a decision that comes down in the Shertlift case?
I mean, I think you might just leave it alone.
Right.
At this point, yeah. I just know that HRC was looking for greater visibility. And so it seems like the library offered that to them. And then it also addressed the concern, the very valid concerns of veterans, that we're not having flag sharing in front of the Americal. So it seemed like for this, to get us through this spring, if we, you know, encourage the library trustees to allow for that, I think we kind of achieve a few different objectives there without setting anything beyond that. And then, to Mr. Mullen's point, I think we'll have much more clarity come this fall about what we can and cannot do, and then we tailor our policy accordingly, if there is a policy to be had.
Okay, so, so we leave in place the policy that we have, and, I mean, and then, I guess, reach out to the library trustees.
Right. Do we need to make a motion to officially?
We can kind of do like a sense of the council kind of thing, like, we would like to see them support this.
Yes, right.
Yeah.
Could we make some kind of a motion to say that the town council supports?
Right, that's what I, yeah.
Good idea, yes.
Yes.
Like a basically nonvinding, but like a consensus vote, basically.
Yep, yep, yep. Yeah, and then, I mean, if they, whatever they do, we still have the policy in place to fly it at the Americal. That's not been rescinded. Okay. All right. Do I have a motion for a support? So moved?
So I'll make a motion in that we support the request for the pride flag and the Juneteenth flag to fly at the library during the month of June, that being the only exception that we're endorsing relative to flag flying on that pole at this time. Subject to the library trustees' approval, obviously.
Second that motion.
Any additional discussion? All in favor? Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to say, and with that, we don't need to add it to the motion, but that the Supreme Court will, usually they make all their decisions, their big decisions in June. So come back and have a discussion on the current flag policy, any changes we maybe need, you know, July over the summer, I would want to say that.
I agree.
And I do just want to remind everyone, because I understand the examples of a hate group coming, but we do have a welcoming policy in town that all committees and boards, including ourselves, are held to, which we did pass when we had hate groups come to town. So I think that would also include if they were trying to get a, like, Counselor Dombrowski's example was much better, because I could see that, and it gets onto us not being neutral. So, yeah, but I just agree with the motion. I want to see the flags up for the third year, or fourth year, in 2019. We start in 2019, so this will be the 14th year. Fourth year, wow, fourth year. So I do, I support the motion, and I think we just commit to having the conversation over the summer about revisiting the current flag policy.
Makes sense.
Great. Any additional discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Benny.
Thank you, Ben.
Thanks very much, Benny.
Maybe, Anne, you can...
Yeah, thank you all for your time and your thoughts on this.
Thank you. So I'm the liaison to the trustees. So Benny, I'll reach out to you, and we'll, we'll talk about how to approach the trustees as well. Great.
Sounds great.
Thanks. Okay. Item B, the bench in Lake structure policy has been withdrawn, so we do not have to address that. Proposed joint representation concerning Director of Assessments intermunicipality agreement. Steve?
Yes, so we are exploring the possibility of sharing our assessor with another community, much with the challenge given to me by Counselor Dombrowski to find more efficient ways to save money. So we take the challenge here. And actually, the town of Linfield has been, you know, quietly seeking perhaps the ability to kind of join our little group with Reading in sharing the Director of Assessments. I've talked with Victor about it. It is a smaller community, Linfield, less houses, smaller commercial base. He feels very confident he can handle that with the other two communities. As he does, he'll be Wakefield employee. Our assessor would handle the Director of Assessments and the two other communities along with us, and the boards would be separate. So in order to do that, we have to enter into another intermunicipal agreement, which would be all three of our communities together on it. As the council knows, our council works for Wakefield and as well for Linfield. So we would need authority from the board to have the chair sign a letter that basically says that we're waiving any conflict of interest. And it's pretty much going to be the same agreement that we've had before with other communities. The real crux of the matter is how the numbers work. And Tom just says, what's that sheet you're going to, you're going to put on here for Exhibit A with the numbers, which we worked out among the three communities and brought back to the board for discussion. So this allows Tom to represent us in actually setting the actual item together. And Linfield is also okay with it, from my understanding. Thank you.
Counselor McLean?
Steve, no problem with it generally, but, you know, Linfield does have a whole nother probably group of properties to be revalued, and also has a good chunk of Market Street, so Victor can do all three.
Yeah, he says he can, and he would, he would be using, you know, outside consultants there to bring some of the, you know, the data into him, like Patriot Properties, like he's used with us. So, yeah, he's very confident. And you know what? You know, it works out well for Victor. He makes a little bit more money. We save money. So it works out well.
That sounds like a win-win.
Yeah.
Counselor Chines?
I'm comfortable with Mr. Mullen's representation on this as well. I don't have an issue with that. I would just ask, when and if you do have a decision negotiated, I think it would be helpful, you know, to Counselor McLean's question, just to see sort of a plan around sort of backfilling for the capacity of Victor's that would be going to Linfield. You know, obviously, I have no doubt about his ability to manage a larger set of communities, and I can understand, very much understand why Linfield would want to have him on board. But I just want to make sure that, you know, we have a solid plan in place around our own needs so that they don't get compromised in any way.
Absolutely. I told Victor he still had to be at my 7:30 coffee clutch every morning. So, yes, absolutely. We've talked a lot about this, you know.
So we just need a motion for, to allow the joint representation?
Yes, and to allow the chair to sign the letter in the packet.
So moved?
Second.
Additional discussion? Counselor Dombrowski?
I would just say, I'm 100% behind this for Mr. Mullen representing both communities, as long as you'll commit to being a better negotiator on behalf of Wakefield.
I've got to say, when this first came up, my first thought was, I'm going to lose my license, and I'm going to jail.
With our permission. Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, item 10, I'm glad we let Karen go a long time ago. And a request advertised for appointments of the youth council for one-year terms from July 1st to June 30th of 2023. I was reminded that we, they are on a different schedule because of the school year. So, do we actually need a motion for that? Guess we'll do it.
So moved? Second?
Discussion, all in favor? Great. Motion passes seven to zero. Announcements? Counselor Dombrowski?
I just realized that I'm sitting between two people, and I can guarantee, just based on numbers, that one of you will be here at our next meeting, because there are four candidates and three spots. So it very well may be two of you, but at least one. So I wish you both a lot of luck.
If there's one, I'll talk to you later.
I wish you both a lot of luck, as well as the other candidates that are running. Just wanted to remind everybody that tomorrow is Local Election Day at the Galvin, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And, you know, just turn out and just have your voice be heard. We have contested election, we have contests in town for town council and school committee. I know a lot of people have put a lot of hard work in, and we also have some uncontested too that also are deserving of votes as well. So please, you know, check that out. And I do have something from the senior center, and I realize she's not here tonight, but there is this, these placemats. It's a Happy Retirement Judy that everyone saw. So I thought anyone who couldn't make it, this was, everyone enjoyed a nice event with Judy, and Judy has been phenomenal, I think, with 19 years at the senior center, 37 years with the town. Incredible commitment to our community. And, you know, I know Karen will do a phenomenal job, but Judy, you know, in her own right, you know, can't be replaced. So thank you, Judy, for everything you've done. Thanks. That's all I have.
Just a quick thing. Tomorrow, not tomorrow, Wednesday night is a forum for the Wakefield Memorial High School Building Project. I think last time I mentioned that we were hoping to do it in person. It actually will be on Zoom, but definitely tune in at 7:00. We do have our preferred schematic review submission to the state due in May. And so there'll be some information in that, in that meeting about the option that we'll be promoting at, you know, for that schematic report, which would be a new building on the site of Beasley Oval. I just also want to encourage people, please go out and vote tomorrow. And I do want to say an early thank you to Town Clerk Betsy Sheeran, everyone in the clerk's office, and all the poll workers. I'm certain that Betsy is asleep right now, because I know she'll be up at about 2:00 AM getting ready for the election, and probably up for at least 24 hours after that. And so, you know, they work hard. It's a long day.
It is.
And certainly, you know, you can't have democratic government without people that work the polls that they do. And so really grateful for all of their work tomorrow.
Okay. So I want to wish Mike McLean and Jonathan Chines good luck tomorrow, and again, reiterate the importance of voting. And also want to remind everybody to complete their survey for the master plan. A lot of people have opinions about the direction of Wakefield, and this is a great opportunity for you to have your say. So those will be, the survey will be open through April 27, and you can find it right on the town website. Very easy to find, to click on it. And I also want to say thank you to Anne Santos for everything that Anne has done for our town, and the support she's provided to everybody in this town of baking it, bringing the voice of the people to the community, to the table here, and leading the way and teaching me a lot, and being guidance along the way. So we will, we will miss you.
And we have a little presentation here. This is Anne Santos's last meeting after nine years. Nine, yeah. Go ahead.
Can I do some updates before?
Yeah, I do update too.
Do updates before. Okay, we're going to hold back.
Go ahead. I'll go after you.
So just some updates, because I also want to, you know, thank Anne, the dean of the council. So we are going to miss you greatly. I'm glad we're doing something. Just some little updates as, at this meeting. First, I want to just thank the first responders in public safety about the three alarm fire we had last week. I saw Chief Sullivan, you know, continuously impressed by our public safety and all that they do in our town. So thank you. And on that note, we talked a lot about the social services groups in our town last week through a grant that we actually have through Melrose Wakefield Hospital. The Board of Health pulled together a lot, anyone that works on social services in town. So people that do the community dinners, the Board of Health, people from Wake Up. It was this great meeting and talking about collaboration and how to best serve our community members. And when I hear about the great work of Quarrel and other individuals in our town, you know, the nurses and the, everyone, it was just, it was really great to see that. And so I also, one, you know, thank you for going and getting those grants, Steve, you and your team, because they make a difference, and it really shows the services that we do. And on that note, just two more things. Events are back, are coming back. So the Sweet Sir Lecture Series is back. I got a postcard in the mail, September on October, which is one of my favorite events every year. And so we haven't had it for a couple of years, but back... And so we haven't had it for a couple of years, but back, three really great, I think there are three authors. I should have brought the postcard, but stay tuned for more information about that. And then just for those celebrating, Eid is a week from today. So happy end of Ramadan and happy Eid.
Steve, you have a?
A couple of very, very quick things. Unfortunately, we're gonna congratulate Coral. Coral is going to Linfield to be their Director of Public Health. She's, she's moving up, so, but it's, I'm sorry to see her go. But it's, it's a good, it's a good move for her. A couple of things, the Finance Committee has gone through all of the budgets and approved all the budgets as presented by the town council. And we will be having our pre-town meeting show, which is a show that I have every year with Finance Committee and the superintendent, on May 5th via Zoom at 6 o'clock. And it'll be taped and be on WCAT and on the town website. So come in and get a little bit of information about where the budgets are going and what have you. And there is an event noon Friday at the library, where they'll be raffling the winners of a tree to be planted on their property, on whoever goes in. And this is in celebration of the library anniversary and of Arbor Day anniversary in Wakefield. And the tree is donated by the Rotary Club. So if any councilors wants to go at noon on Friday, it'll be at the library. And that's it for announcements.
Anybody else? All right. Now Anne. We have to pull up the PowerPoint presentation. Here we go.
I got a PowerPoint presentation.
You ready, Madam?
I'm ready. He's got the. Okay, so we can see here, you didn't start with the town council. You started with the Board of Health, and I bet you started with PTOs, but we didn't go back that far.
In Wakefield Junior High School Committee, I mean, Student Council, so way back.
We didn't really get our investigative team on this, so, you know, within the recent future. You have done a lot of service. You've been a great service to Wakefield. Next. There you are, your very fir-, is that the first debate, I think?
I think it's, that's, that's the first debate.
Oh, wow. I think that's your picture still, too. So that's, that's what she, yeah, that's what she looked like when she started all of this. Next. And of course, you've been in leadership multiple times, starting in 2014, 2015. Stepped into vice chair in 2019, when we had a kind of unexpected vacuum there with Ed. Not with Ed, but you were chair, she was vice chair. And then, of course, chair in 2020, and I was very fortunate to learn under you, so thank you very much. Next. So this is interesting. In your time.
Oh, wow.
Look how much the budget has grown. From, so I don't know whether that's a blame or a.
Right, exactly.
But the budget grew from 76 million to 160 million, which I really think just reflects kind of how the town has grown and, and, you know, become better and probably more complex as well. Next. So here are some of the big things that happened in your tenure. The new, that you should be very proud of, the new Galvin Middle School. I don't know, what does that mean, Steve? Automatic trash.
Oh, I remember.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
I know that one.
Okay, yeah, I guess that was exciting.
Was at the time.
It was very exciting at the time.
That was pre-me, as I say. Pre-me. I am an environmentalist, but yes, I know. So obviously, the Human Rights Commission, which we've seen the fruits of that today in today's discussion. And the Albion Culture Building, so going from being the MLD department to a real showcase on Albion. Our town's first Facebook page, which we know you love and hate.
Absolutely. Love, hate. Yep.
The name changed to Town Council. Marine was just talking about that. When the two of you started, you were select people, selectmen.
Selectmen.
No, we were selectmen. You were selectmen. You were selectmen. I remember watching those debates, and I remember you getting up in town meeting and talking about how our daughters, you know, look up to us. And then obviously adoption of age-friendly community and so many, you know, probably hundreds of other things. Oh, more here. Envision Project. Flag policy. Okay, we got a little ahead of ourselves. No, but we did have a flag. I mean, we have had a flag policy. Again, everything is interconnected, right, with the HRC and then visibly becoming more inclusive. Means-tested tax relief, outdoor dining, a big, a big, you know, achievement, you know, kind of public health force, but I think we all learned a lot from that. And of course, the ongoing AAA bond rating.
Could we add the advocacy for nicer-looking barriers?
Yes, nicer barriers. What else? Anybody else? Did we miss anything?
Yeah, like the, the revision of the Public Safety Building. That was a town-wide vote that Anne really helped with, I think. We all did. I mean, we all worked as a team for all of these, so. Joint effort.
These are things, just.
Oh, yeah.
And this is really great. I love this. A new generation of leaders, so. New police chief, new deputy fire chief. I mean, not even a new chief, I mean, a new position for first deputy fire chief.
Yeah, that was a lot of work.
Big, a lot of work. New Health Director, DPW, new building inspector, and then a firsts. So First Communications Director, Council on Aging Director, Community and Economic Development Director.
That I voted against, but I'm incredibly pleased that vote lost.
We bring that up.
I bring that up. Oh, you do?
Well, and what is the emergency management one? Okay.
Oh, that one, too.
Yes.
I own it.
Okay, here's our soundbites. I'm off Facebook and it's good for my soul.
True.
But she does go back on every now and then for certain purposes. I'm gonna beat Betsy's record for the shortest meeting ever, which I think you're, I think you're. I think that still holds. Can you see my eye roll on camera?
My husband tells me that he can.
Always there as a hockey mom. And Steve was right about the emergency manager position.
I own that mistake.
So I think.
And, and through the years, they've really taken the toll on you.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, it really has, so that's.
You should have had a Greek statue.
So thank you, actually, Steve put that together. I think it was Marine's idea. So I don't take any credit for any of it, but we will miss you. I personally just so miss you.
Oh, my gosh. Can I say a few words?
You, of course you can.
My husband brought me flowers, so I want to give him credit for gorgeous flowers he brought me. Yeah, nine years is a long time, and it's, you know, it's good for new blood to come in. I just want to say it's been such an honor serving the town for all these years. Nine years on the council and seven before that, six before that with the Board of Health. I think we are the gold standard for town government in this area. And certainly, it's based on our leader, Steve Mayo, and I can't have asked for a better partner for nine years, nine years to work with him. I'm so proud of our departments. I don't want to name them all, but just so proud of all the departments and the men and women that work. Go beyond, and a lot of us know that, what they are required to do because they're so vested in our community, and I want to thank them from the bottom of my heart. I just wanted to just say a couple of things, and I know it looks like a lot of words, but I don't have that. I had, I'm doing a Leadership Institute through my work, and you had to focus on three qualities, breakdown qualities, that were non-negotiable. The ones I focused on were integrity, grace, and loyalty. I don't think you can do this job without integrity. You have to certainly be true to yourself, but understand that words matter, that you must be transparent, you must be truthful. And folks might not always agree with you. Folks might not applaud your vote, but they should know where your vote's coming from. And I hope that, that I have shown that over the, the last nine years. And I think it's a quality that we all, that resonates with all of us, that if people can't count on our words, if our colleagues can't count on us, then that's, that's an issue. I also, you know, within integrity, the compromise, the ability to compromise is so important. It's been lost a little bit, federal on down, and that's something that this board should really strive to continue. Grace, we saw it tonight in more than a few places. I think that we need to rule with grace. We have to know that folks have a story and that we have to show empathy. It doesn't mean that we agree with everything and we vote to, to save everyone, but we should have elements of grace in how we lead. And I think this is what this community is about. I have always said that this community is at its best when it is reaching out to those who have suffered a loss. I've said that before I joined, joined the council. Wakefield's a beautiful community in that way, and I know that we have supported that. And finally, I am a big fan of loyalty, not mob boss loyalty, but loyalty in that you should, we should have each other's back. We should, we can disagree, we can argue, we can advocate vociferously against each other. But I want my colleagues to know, I want the employees of the town to know that I have their back, that if something goes wrong, I will support them. It doesn't mean there's not accountability, but that to me is such a critical quality. It's not an old-time quality. It's one that if people can, can trust that you're gonna do the right thing, I think that's so important. And I, you know, I just, I'm, I'm gonna end with a little Shakespeare, Tom Mullin. From Ivy to Ivy. So obnoxious, but we always joke about that. And it doesn't include Steve. It's an inside joke. But one of my absolute favorite passages is from Henry V, written in 1599, the Saint Crispian's Speech. And to me, it just so residence, it resonates. And some of you will recognize it because of Band of Brothers. But, and it's a lot of male imagery, but in 1599, I think we can forgive that. "This story shall the good man teach his son in Crispin Crispian shall ne'er go by from this day to the ending of the world, but we in it shall be remembered, we few, we happy few, we band of brothers; for he today that sheds his blood with me shall be my brother, be he ne'er so vile." I love that. And that speaks to me that, you know, we're in this together. You fight hard, you respect each other, but in the end, you really have to work together to make Wakefield a better town. So thank you all so much. There are better things to come, I know, for this town, and I will be watching. So thank you all.
We'll figure out how to recruit.
Some committee or other.
Some of that as well. Anybody want to add anything?
I'll just say, Anne, you have, have been a great presence on this board. It's been a true pleasure to have you on the team, and I truly see you as a teammate, and more importantly, as a friend. And some, I think some of our best moments have probably not been on camera, but off, off-camera. Where we've like had like, you know, just like, you know, a casual, you know, get-together and just like kind of talking. And just, and I know your passion for this talent is just like so incredible, and it comes through, you know, and, and through all the work that you've done and all of your comments, you know, that you've made. You're, you're truly passionate. I was going to like write something on Facebook, but I know that you have a love-hate, so I.
A bit of hate-hate right now.
I opted not to. But I'll say, you know, and I, I think it's really incredible, too. I, I believe that you're part of the first female majority of, of the town council or, or, you know, Board of Selectmen prior. And that says, that says so much, you know? And so I, I think you're, you're, you're one of the founding, you know, women of, of the first, like, you know, majority of the council, which is awesome. You know, that's a real reflection of where we are in 2022, which is really good stuff. But I know that your commitment is unmatched. You've been positioning for this since junior high.
The pinnacle, this is your pinnacle.
And I could not have asked for a better partner when I, when I was chair. You were an incredible vice chair. I know, I know you always had my back, and you, it's, it's a loss for our, for our council to have you, you know, moving on, but I know that, you know, you'll still be around in town, and we're gonna call on you often.
Thank you.
So best of luck going forward.
Council Chines?
I, I, I love what Councilor Butt said as the dean of the town council. You know, because I, I think it speaks to the fact that, you know, for a lot of us, particularly, you know, those of us that, well, we all came after you, but, you know, you've been a mentor to a lot of us in so many different ways. Julie talked about it as chair, but I, I think we all learned how to be town councilors by, by watching your example and by paying attention to you in meetings and listening to the advice that you shared with us generously outside of this room. And so I, I just want to say thank you for, for everything you've done as a resident. But, you know, as a friend and a colleague, it's been just incredible to serve with you. I, I have so much respect for your, your willingness and your ability to speak out for what's right at all times. And I have so much respect for you to do that in a way where you never lose your sense of humor, your sense of humanity, or your sense of compassion for everyone else. I mean, you're, you're an easy person to work with. And, you know, I think that's a testament to the fact that, you know, you, you've always put an effort on bringing people together and listening to people and, and being collegial. And, you know, that, that just, I think, has set the tone for us as a council in ways that I, I hope you appreciate, because, you know, you, you talked about us being kind of an example of government, you know, of good government in this area. And, you know, there aren't always councils and select boards that work well together. And I, I think the fact that we do with diverse viewpoints is, is partly a, a result of the example that you've shared as a, as a leader formally and informally. So thank you for everything. We'll miss you. It's been, it's been a little bittersweet to be on the campaign trail these last couple of months without you after three years ago. I, I enjoyed seeing you so often and look forward to having a chance to again, once you have some time to relax.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Oh, sorry, yes.
I just want to say two things. First, I have been an Anne fan since the early 90s, when I first saw Anne as an Assistant District Attorney in Lowell District Court. And second, Anne, I think it's time you came clean to the whole town, as you did to us privately, that your election to the student council was rigged.
I was helping, no, mine was not rigged. I was asked to help rig something. So it's, statute of limitations is way past on that one, because there are people still.
They didn't have ethics training like they do.
Oh, my goodness, yeah.
So I, I do just want to say you have been everything that Ed and Jonathan said. It's been a pleasure to learn under you and grow with you and so proud of all that you've accomplished. And I just, I'm surprised Council Dombrowski didn't mention this, but you are always welcome back to our dodgeball team. I love it so much. And, and we'll see you on May 16th at town meeting. You're not really going anywhere, so we're gonna see you around, but dodgeball is open invitation.
Thank you. I was hoping someone would say that.
For life.
I could say just a couple of.
Please, of course, you can.
I will, I will miss you greatly, and you know that. And I think that I've had the pleasure to serve with so many wonderful selectmen now town council. And you are a giant among them. And I think the whole town knows that. And I was interested when you said, you know, supporting the town employees, what have you. They know that you had their back, so it's not that, they know that. And so, you know, you were incredibly smart, kind, objective, firm. I love the way that you would move the question, get it going. We've had the discussion, let's move on. So I think that, that was great, and in always a kind way. And it's interesting how a lot of things have changed over the years. So in 2013, when you first came on, this was the cover of the town report, all right? Has the Warrior logo on it. And so that's kind of come full circle, right? The Warrior logo. More things, they stay the same. What they change is the same. So I thought it was kind of interesting when I was going through that the other day. But you'll be missed, but you'll be around.
I'll be around. Not going anywhere. Thank you all so much. You're all tired, so. No, thank you. And thank my family. All our families have to put up with so much. So thank you, my husband, for the beautiful flowers, but.
We hope you get some time to spend with them now.
Yes, because I'm, yeah.
Any matters not anticipated for the agenda? Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Our next regular council meeting is Monday, May 9th, 2022. Remember to go out and vote.
I move that we adjourn.
I second. Discussion, all in favor?
I just want to say it's fitting that her last, her last act as a town council.
As an adjournment. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, Wakefield.
Oh, and WCAT, I didn't even say that. My God, thank you to WCAT for nine years of wonder. Thank you so much.